Time now is four o'clock. I'll call this meeting in order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Patty, take your roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Deb.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Todd.
Here. Mind all the commissioners make sure their mics are on so it broadcasts into the gallery and under the recording. Welcome guests and visitors and media today. I do remind anyone that has a cellphone, if you could please turn it to mute or silent. Just not to interrupt anyone that's speaking today. Is there any additions or changes to today's agenda?
Ooh, we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of the minutes from March 8th, 2018. Is there any chance to review the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is claims. Is there any chance to review the claims for today?
Yes.
And are there any questions on the claims for today? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the claims.
Move to approve claims.
Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is surplus of Sheriff's Department's 2002 Dodge. Any questions in regards to this? I know we usually, at times, if the vehicle's in decent enough condition, we can use it somewhere else in the county, but the sheriff recommends that we surplus this because it would need some money for repairs.
No questions here. Recommend that we approve the surplus of the 2012 Dodge Charger pickup. No, it's a car, excuse me.
Deb's got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is abatement, oh, and refund of Oak Hills, Rasmussen Road District. Patty, can you give a little?
Yeah, a little background.
This abatement is for, um, they had requested the wrong amount, and I called the Department of Revenue, and abatement can be made. And then two of the parcels were paid already, so they get a refund.
So this is all in Oak Hills, all these listed ones here?
It's just half, yep. And it just affects the tax dollars for the road district.
This is money that we collect for the road district?
For them, yes.
So this is just coming out of their own road district?
This isn't Oak Hills property, which, say it again, what you called this?
Oak Hills, Rasmussen Road District.
Okay, because Oak Hills is south.
It's just new, yeah.
Oh.
Any other questions in regards to the abatement and refund? Patty, is one motion sufficient on this? I entertain a motion on the abatement and refund.
Move the abatement and refund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deb, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are several reports in the consent agenda. There's the ambulance auditor treasure report, January mental illness report, full cache, register of deeds, sheriff, veteran service officer, and the welfare office. Also, the consent agenda is right away for a number of right aways requests and a plat for applied engineering. Are there any, uh, any of these that need to be pulled out and discussed? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deb, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Pat?
Okay, so we had a list of individuals that were, um, applied to be planning commissioner. So we have several candidates for this. Um, I have a ballot sheet here that I can hand out. I will, we're going to vote for two, since the planning commission will be a total of nine. And the applicants are Patty Davies, Daniel Clemmish, Eric Conings, Greg Loest, Christie Schultz, Gary Sillyson, and Zane Williams. And this is for planning commission.
He said two, vote for two?
Three year term, correct. Three year term.
Take that.
My terms go from April, April through... To go, um...
April through March. So we had just finished up the term with the March meeting last week. Is it, is it okay? Any questions for me? It's pretty simple. Okay, thanks.
We have Eric, two. Conings. Greg Loest, one. Christie Schultz, one. Gary Sillyson, two. Zane Williams, three.
We have to run off between two of them?
That's four, isn't it? And Zane?
One, two, three, four. But did you have two?
So we have to re-vote on those soon?
Is that how that? Just on the, on the two, or?
On the two that had two, I guess.
So you have, you have one majority, right?
One majority is Zane.
And two, and then there's two that have two each?
Eric and Gary.
So then they would have to be run off.
You just, commissioners, just revote them in a new ballot then, or how? What's the right procedure on that?
Vote for one of the two.
Yeah.
Yes. And I would, I can get you another piece of paper?
Okay.
Sure. Who was it? Gary Sillyson? Who was it? Gary Sillyson?
Was it Conings? Always the first.
We were ahead of schedule, that's why.
So now you're voting for one. And it will be between Gary Sillyson and?
Eric Conings. Eric.
Eric Conings? So those terms will start April 1st, did you say, the first meeting in April?
So now, now my process is that we will notify everybody of the results of the election, and the new commission members will start April, with the April meeting, April 10th. And then we'll give thank yous to the ones that applied and let the ones know that received the nomination.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat. Next item on the agenda, spring load limits. Non-divisible permit resolution. This is kind of a continuation off of, off of our last meeting and a couple meetings before that. And, uh, and we talked with Cliff quite a bit about this, we, some of the contractors. This is just for the non-divisible loads. Allowing the resolution to permit a vehicle that is, uh, we already allowed a, passed a resolution for loads that, um, exceeded six tons per axle on a non-divisible load. The, uh, there was a permit process in place for that. This will, uh, give a little latitude in regards to, um, loads that are over 80,000 pounds but have the axles to spread out the, the weight. The resolution that we've talked about is in regards to, uh, for the first from 80,000, 86,000 pounds, a fee of $100. And then anything above 86,000, if the axle support it, an extra $25 fee per, uh, per 2,000 pounds.
Right.
And they, uh, there's going to be a haul route on there, their mileage, in regards to that. Cliff, is that?
For me, it will work, but for most of these guys, it won't. Like Andy back here. They're pumped, they can't get down the road, they can't. They can't break it down and they don't have the activity to carry it.
Will you guys come up here, Cliff, and then anyone else?
Like, I said, Andy does not have enough the axles to carry it. He can't on a seven-ton road. He can, he can go down a seven-ton road without any problem.
What's the total gross vehicle weight?
55,000.
55,000, so it's under the gross vehicle weight?
It's under the gross, if I can't, on a six-ton road, I can't axle it out.
So that would?
Go around my steers just a little bit where I can't physically do it.
Okay, so that should fall underneath our previous resolution that we, there's a permit process for it. It's over, it's over six tons per axle?
Yes, it's over six.
But under the 80,000?
Under 80,000, correct.
And it, and it's a non-divisible load?
Correct.
So that should fall underneath, my understanding, the same as like the hay grinder. There is a permit process for that. There is, um, you'd have to go through the highway department and fill out the permit process from point A to point B, but there is a process for that, allows that. Only it doesn't allow for is a load like, a divisible load. The state DOT, uh, won't allow us, or they'll take away funds or grants, if we permit something that's a divisible load. But a non-divisible load, we can permit and we have a resolution placed currently for that. So if I understand right, your, your trucks are under?
Like, to the pump weighs ballpark 54.7.
Okay.
Right now, I can't axle a six-ton load or six-ton axle. There's no way possible.
And you're at seven, about seven tons per axle right now?
Pretty close, ballpark, yes.
So, Carla, our, our current permit process allows for that, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we go over the six-ton, longer than 180,000?
Well, you have to permit.
You have to permit for it?
Yeah.
Is that an annual, can we do an annual permit, or is that per job, or per job?
There's a...
There's both, yeah.
There's a single trip permit, a multi-trip permit. And this is only for the spring. This is only for six weeks, this is all it is for. So...
Yeah, so we bounce around, you know, the pumps might be five different locations, especially this time of year with these guys wanting to go and, you know, permit each, each order? Or can I do like a, a monthly permit? Or?
The, uh, there's a multi-trip permit and there's a a seasonal permit
Yeah.
as well. Of course, a seasonal permit's going to be a little bit more than a multi-trip and more than, of course, a single trip. There is, there is relief for that. So...
But would his be, his would not be the $100 permit, I mean, $100 a trip deal?
No, he would fall on...
He's under the six, under 80,000.
He's under the 80,000, so it'd fall back to the original resolution we passed here two weeks ago, month ago, or something like that.
Yeah, month ago, I think.
Good, yeah. So there's a process in place for that, so...
I've got some forms.
Thanks, Carla. So...
So the pump, okay.
But you, it's not going to help you because you can break yours down.
Why am I any difference in the pump?
Because you can take forms off.
Oh, okay.
That's, and that doesn't come by a, a rule by us, a rule by the state. That's a federal definition of what's a divisible load and what's a non-divisible load. Essentially, if you can break down your load in eight man-hours, that's considered divisible load. It doesn't apply to grain, it doesn't apply to livestock, doesn't apply to fuel. Just pretty much anything that can't be broken down in eight man-hours is how the feds define that.
I can break down a little bit, so, I just didn't understand that too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people don't understand this whole...
We got two guys out there that, that can't get out on that road unless they do break down. I mean, if they were going, once they get on the highway, they can go wherever they want to go, but they live on Dear Boulevard and they can't get out.
Okay. As long as they meet, fall under the previous resolution's requirements, there's a, there's a, there's a, some attitude for that. You know, we'll discuss the net, the other part of the resolution we'll amend today in regards to Cliff and over that 80,000 gross vehicle weight. But, you know, it's, it's not a desirable situation for anybody in these spring load limits. I mean, DOT and everybody says this is something that nobody likes to do, but unfortunately, it's, it's a necessity, especially with the roads and the condition that they're in, so... But there is a little attitude, it's just going to take a little paperwork and a little bit of, uh, extra revenue or fee for that, so...
I'm, I'm not su, I, I, I know Lance's business, I, I, you're a cement pop?
Yes, concrete materials.
Okay.
Lance, will that fix it?
Hey, hey, Cliff?
Will that fix it for you?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm divisible, but I'm, like I said, there's people that aren't going to do that to get in and out of their own business that have been there.
True.
I mean, we've all, we've all got our trucks to be able to handle the seven-ton. I mean, we've axled them out, um, done everything we could to conform to seven tons, and now all of a sudden, it's six, you know? I mean, that's the problem.
For six weeks, eight weeks, something like that?
Yeah. None of us, you know, expected this to happen with, you know, when you have a business on a road, you're stuck. When you have jobs that were pre-scheduled, you're stuck. Um, we're all ready for seven, and then all of a sudden, we're hit with six, so that's it's a quick, quick change for us.
Yeah, this is not been an easy topic.
Yep.
But one that we've had are, a lot of the recommendations come from the state on this in regards to the condition of the road. It's not just something that's been thrown out there. And essentially, over half the counties now are down to six tons per axle because their foundations are getting to that point. So it's, it's a problem, not just a Yankton County problem, it's a problem across the state, so...
I, I'm not sure I understood when you said, uh, your pump is, is about a certain weight.
It's 54.7 something.
It needs to be under?
It's under 80,000. It's way under 80,000. It all depends on how much water he's carrying.
Yep.
Because he holds 250 gallons of water, and he might run from a job to another job, be half.
Yeah.
So he's, if he's full of fuel and water, he's under 55 to something like that ballpark number. I don't remember exact ton, pounds, but he's way under 80,000.
I, I just didn't want you to think, well, you came here and said about.
No, no, sorry. But, no, actually, he's way below 80,000 when he's fully loaded with fuel and water, so...
Now, the water may be considered divisible. That's where the experts, they come into play, so you'll have to, that may be a thing you'll have, you'll have to accommodate for it.
Yeah, we can.
Have a water truck come behind or something like that, so...
Yep.
Cliff, if it was a seven-ton, would there be a problem here today?
Absolutely not. We wouldn't have a single, none of us would have a single problem in here on seven-ton. Not one of us. But...
But our roads can't handle seven-ton right now. According to the engineers. And I know that's debatable, some people don't always believe the engineers, but unfortunately, they're their experts, we got to lean on, so...
All right.
Okay, thanks. So the proposed resolution, the amended amendment to the resolution states, uh, therefore be resolved that certain Yankton County highways be restricted to six tons per axle, 80,000 gross vehicle weight imposed on trucks, trailers, and wagons. Yankton County will allow a permit process for non-divisible loads, for overweight, oversized loads. Yankton County will be using distance traveled as determined through the route specified. The overweight fee will cost a calculated 45 cents per ton per mile in addition to the standard permit fee of $100 for over 80,000 pounds. But less than 86,000 pounds, there will be an additional $25 for every 2,000 pounds over 86,000 pounds. The Yankton County Highway Superintendent will cause, will cause to be installed adequate warning signs to notify traffic public, traveling public of the load, weight restrictions on the restricted county hard surface roads with the following exception of County Road 210 or Dear Boulevard extending 3.22 miles north to the entrance of Dakota Plains Ag Center, that the restrictions will be enforced upon places such signs until signs are removed. Any, uh, questions in regards to the resolution?
What, what, what were the signings? What was the signage that you put up? And where was it located?
They're, they're already up, they put them up this week. They're on all the asphalt roads. All the Yankton County asphalt roads.
They are present?
Yep.
When, when did they go up?
They started Tuesday. I'm sorry, they started last week, Tuesday.
Last week, Tuesday?
Yep.
So, were there some roads that were posted?
There were, they ran out of signs, so they finished them up this week. So they all should have signs on them.
And what was the signage look like?
They're, I don't know. They're regulated.
Forty-ton load limit?
They're, yeah, 40 tons, six, uh, axle.
And it's fastened, it's fastened to a sign that's directly at the entrance of that road?
Right, at the intersection, yep.
And then at the other way coming?
Correct. Anytime entering a Yankton County asphalt road.
And were there any flags or any other notification to people that weights were, weight limits were in effect?
We put it in, I mean, it was advertised in the paper, it's on the website, but there's no, not that I know of, they didn't put flags out.
Any other discussion in regards to the amended resolution?
So now if a guy's got, with our resolution, just so you understand, if you've got the axles that allow you to go, uh, over 80,000, you can go up to 85, 6?
You can actually go over 86 if you have the axles, but you have to pay an extra 25 bucks for every 2,000 pounds.
So, let me ask this question. If person, if, because this is, this is, this has been a quick thing. It came on quick. If somebody was fined in that period from last, wherever they went on, until now, would we, uh, consider refunding, uh, that fine?
We don't have the authority to. The fines issued off a state statute.
Well, I'm sure we figure it out somehow, if, if, if it was the right thing to do.
Well, this would be for the permit process. So if someone was overweight and didn't have any permit, I guess that's a legal question for the state's attorney. He's the one who'd be prosecuting or dismissing it.
Sounds like a reasonable statement. But at the time, like, like Todd said, if they were overweight to begin with, they're overweight.
I think that's up to the discretion of state's attorney.
Did you know of someone?
Doesn't make any difference.
Just asking. Just saying.
It wasn't me. I just think there was so much cloudiness around this all during the month of, month of March. If we've got, uh, normal businesses that, uh, would normally have been within the weight with their axle configuration, a consideration could be made.
Load limit's been in place for a week right now.
I understand that.
Other discussion on the, uh, non-divisible load permit resolution? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the amended resolution?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is bridge inspection. 2018 resolution.
I just need South Dakota DOT asks us for a recommendation of, of the engineer that we pick each year. Excuse me. To do the inspections. So Brian recommends Clark. They're doing the ones for this year that we're working on in 2018. He wants to continue with them.
This is application that was just notified in the paper was, uh, did our previous en, engineer have the opportunity to apply on this?
It's, I guess I don't know. The, the state sends out a form and Brian just recommends who he would like. Yeah, there's a list here on, of, come from the state. It's got 22 different...
Approved?
Approved companies on there for bridge inspections.
We kind of took, a year ago, we kind of took Clark on on a trial basis.
Right, and he really likes that they provide, um, multiple options instead of full replacement figures is, is one reason he likes them.
Thank you.
One thing about the bridge inspections, this is, uh, money that's funneled from the feds to the state. The state pays 80%, which actually comes from federal funds. County's responsible for 20% of the bridge inspections. Well, I entertain a motion in regards to Brian's recommendation.
I am moved to approve the, uh, usage of Clark for the 2018 bridge inspection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I do see there is a local contractor on here, Johnson Engineering. I, I'm always a big firm believer, we need to, uh, to look at our local contractors, whatever that may be, in regards to, uh, jobs that are being paid out of the county, so... I know last year we went to Clark's, but I think it's something we need to continue to, uh, look at in years to come.
I think a little warning on this one that's coming up would be helpful.
I'd have to agree with Todd, too, on the Johnson Engineering. How many years did they do it before?
Quite a few.
Twenty years, I heard.
But I would say that the highway superintendent's opinion and evaluation of the work performed last year has a little bit of weight in my mind. I mean, I understand, I too would prefer that it was a Yankton, um, business, but, um, for the reasons I stated, I think.
I may not remember right, Deb, but as I recall, the objection last year to Johnson was something to do with furrowing of gravel on bridges.
Doing what?
How they, how they defined when gravel needed to be removed and it was removed on a timely basis in the ferals on the bridges, something in that area.
Yeah, I think you're doing that.
It was not a big issue.
Any other?
I just think we ought to be informed.
I would agree. What's the timeliness on this? Do we have a deadline we have to have this in by?
Yeah, actually, he needs it this week. A motion, second, so...
I'm still in the discussion portion.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure he can, I can find out if he can wait till the next meeting, if you'd like.
Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. There was a request in regards to the road limits, uh, from, uh, Jeff Engerpin from Listerville. Jeff, would you, has your issues been resolved, or would you like to speak a little bit yet?
No, yeah. So with the, the new load limits, obviously, I, I own Listerville Feeding Grain, and I am surrounded by county roads. So therefore, I am being hampered with the new limits. In the past, with the seven-ton, you know, I could still make that work. So I guess I'm asking what your thought process is in not allowing a truck route one way in and out of cities such as Listerville.
You've got a divisible load, right?
Yes, I do. But at eighty thousand pounds, it's about three to four hundred bushel less than what I could normally haul, and it just does not make economical sense to haul.
Yeah, but here to listen once, do you think it makes economic sense for the twenty-three other thousand other customers in the county to pay for overweight vehicles that are destroying roads?
No, I don't.
Okay, that's expanded my argument.
I think the biggest challenge it comes into is we faced, and I understand where you're coming from on this.
I mean, I'm being penalized for basically having a business in Leesterville. I mean, a road was built in the county for another business with no load limits.
Well, I think the same argument could be Utica.
Utica, Mission Hill, you could call all of them. I mean, I've talked to Hutchinson County, they allow the city of Kaleran out.
Well, we've been told a couple meetings ago, if we issued a permit for divisible load, the state of South Dakota will take away our DOT funds, in which we have nearly nine hundred thousand dollars coming to Yankton County this year.
I understand that, but I'm not asking for a divisible permit, I'm just asking for one truck route.
And I'd like to clarify that we did not build that road for that one business. County did not build that road.
Okay.
That road's being paid with a loan from the State Department of Transportation that is being funded by cargo.
The biggest challenge comes into it, the roads are in the condition that they're in. They didn't get there overnight, they've been getting like this for quite a while. When you have engineers that come in and say, "Your roads can't handle seven tons per axle," during the frost coming out, it puts us in a position where we have to listen to the engineers. And I understand your situation, and I feel for you on this, but we are really, we've tried multiple times to build up these roads, get extra money for the roads, and we get the same message back from the voters. So, we have to find ways to make, prolong the roads as long as we possibly can in the condition they are, because I think we can all agree that the roads are not where we want them to be in the condition.
Okay, so basically you're telling me that there's no consideration for a truck route?
At this time, no.
Okay.
It's something we continue to pursue, but right now, we have to go by what the engineers devises, and we also have to look at what the DOT says.
Okay.
All right, can I get a motion to go into Board of Adjustments?
So, move.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Gary, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we're in Board of Adjustments. Pat?
Yes. Okay, first one on the list there, scheduled for four-thirty, is Jeremy Anderson, and Jeremy is requesting a conditional use permit. He has bought a lot in a residential district, moderate density residential district, and is requesting to build an accessory structure before the primary structure, which would be the single-family dwelling. And so, this would require a conditional use permit with conditions to allow us to do that. So, this was recommended for approval by the Yankton County Planning Commission, based on findings of fact dated February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, for a principal structure before an accessory structure requirement in a moderate density rural residential district in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as Lot Eleven and Twelve, Block Three, Zetecor subdivision, Section Five, Township Ninety-three, Range Fifty-seven. Hearing app referred to as Ziskoff South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-nine-one-one address will be to be determined, Ridgeview Drive, Tabor, South Dakota. Six members, the president voted aye, one member voted no. The conditions that we put on this were that the structure will meet all of the accessory structure requirements, in other words, the size, the setbacks, all those types of things, but we also will expect to see the building permit for the residential house to be in place. The condition is to build the principal structure by May of two thousand twenty-one.
To begin construction?
Yep, to start, to have a building permit in our office by May of two thousand twenty-one. And Mr. Anderson is here, if you have any questions for him, but that's been agreeable, and I assume it's still, two thousand twenty-one is a reasonable timeframe. So, with those conditions, it was recommended for approval. Any questions for?
And if he starts on May, on two thousand twenty-one, how long does he have to finish his project?
He has two years. He's got six months to start after you issue a building permit and two years to finish.
Okay.
Other questions for Pat? Now's the time for anyone in the public to speak for or against the Jeremy Anderson conditional use permit. Does anyone like to speak in favor of the permit? Anyone speak in opposition of the permit? Hearing and seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Jeremy Anderson.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit for KGI Wireless for Verizon.
Okay, so Yankton County has conditional uses for all wireless telecommunications in Yankton County, and that includes when we go in and we swap out antennas on the existing towers. So, this is an antenna swap on an existing tower. This tower is located right north of Highway Forty-Six and Highway Eighty-One junction, so it's right there on Highway Eighty-Six, about a half a mile, maybe a mile north of Forty-Six. The, as you can see in the, we've got all the information as to what the antenna sizes will be, and we did have a representative come in from Yankton, or from KGI Wireless Verizon, and the actual antennas will be a little bit smaller than what's currently on there, so we don't have a load problem, and we've done our diligence on the other task, so the Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit to provide modification of existing wireless telecommunications tower, based on findings of fact dated February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. So, said property is legally described as the west half of the southwest quarter, excluding parcels of Section Thirty-One Township Ninety-six, Range Fifty-five. Hearing app referred to as Mayfield South Township, there isn't such a thing, excuse me, Mayfield Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-nine-one-one address is two-nine-six-five-four U.S. Highway Eighty-One Irene, South Dakota. So, this is just simply an antenna swap to improve service.
Does the tower have multiple providers, or just a Verizon provider, Pat?
Yes. The tower's currently being run by KGI for wireless, for Verizon is the provider.
Only provider in the town?
Yes, currently.
Any other questions for Pat? Any public comment for the conditional use permit? Any public comment against the conditional use permit for the KGI Wireless Verizon? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the conditional use permit.
Jason?
Based on the findings of fact.
We need to have based on the findings of fact in the motion, Pat, is that correct?
Yes, I'll fix that.
Jason, Gary second that, still with the same, Jason?
Pardon me?
That's fine, yep.
So, the motion is to approve the conditional use permit based on the finding of facts. That's Don's motion, correct?
Yes.
Gary, do you still second that motion? Yes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is conditional use for a campground. Applicant is Matt Evans, and this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, based on findings of fact of February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, for a seventy camping unit campground in a Lakeside Commercial District in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as Track Two, Whitetail Run, northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Sixteen Township Ninety-three, Range Fifty-six. Hearing app referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-nine-one-one address is to be determined, Alphonse Road, Yankton, South Dakota. During the hearing, there were several different things brought up, which then applied into the conditions here that we're asking. This is a campground that'll have the camping trailers type thing, so these are what we would call a recreation vehicle park, and it's on approximately, it's on six point seven acres in a Lakeside Commercial District, and the all camping pads will have predetermined options for decks, utility sheds, sunscreen, porch covers. All outdoor lighting will be downcast. The park will be operated under published rules and a submitted plan, and a submitted site plan, and also operations plan. Some of the discussion was, is the access, how is the access, what are we going to do with access? We're coming up into somewhat of a dead end road there. The property is in the process of being in a subdivision, and we're in the process right now of subdividing that property, so the subdivision ordinance kicks in too. And so, that means that sets all the road standards, that sets all the grading standards, and that sets all the drainage standards. So, when we start moving forward with this project, Mr. Evans will have to work with us, with the subdivision ordinance, to assure that all those standards are met when we're building this campground. So, then, we had, we asked that, the road would, there's a, and then any road maintenance agreements that would be dealt with, and that would mostly deal with the people that own the Hops Farm, the Heineys. They're just right to the west there. So, we asked for some, but the subdivision basically tells us what these roads, will tell us what the roads will be. We are going to eliminate a road out there that's called Gary Avenue. There's no addresses on it, it's just a loose, it's there, but we're going to go ahead and eliminate that and establish the whole road to be Alphonse Road. So, then it goes right out to the Dear Boulevard. One of the things that's come about from this is that we currently have about a three-block road, which is called Gary Avenue, nobody lives on it, there's no addresses off of it, and then you have the Hops Farm, and they're sitting there on Alphonse, and the GIS, and everybody that uses it cannot find Alphonse Road, because there's a gap in there. This Gary throws them all off, so we'll get that fixed along with this. And then lastly, I did visit with Mr. Evans about this too, and we are clear on this, that the applicant must obtain a South Dakota camping license, even though the state says you're running them weekly, monthly, and they don't want to get them, they don't want to issue, they don't license until it's weekly, but if it's a requirement on the conditional use permit, they will issue them. And so, that will be done, and then a Department of Environmental Natural Resources septic system, which will be run through them to allow the permit to go in there, so we will have that be verified by Department of Natural Resources. Again, all Yankton County subdivision ordinances will be compliant, meaning all drainage plans and systems will be approved by the Planning and Zoning Office, and any change to the site plan, RV operation rules, utility requirements must be submitted to the Planning Department for approval before implementation. And then lastly, this is a monthly or greater rental. We have not, and we are not issuing at present time any campgrounds that go weekly or daily or anything less than a month. Monthly is what we run them, monthly or longer. So, the ingress, all those types of things will all be issued and all be covered under either the conditional use or the subdivision ordinance. Any questions?
He also mentioned some landscaping that was going to be done?
Yep.
And that the sunscreen roofs weren't going to exceed the height of the trailer.
And that's very good, yes, and that's also stated in here too, yes, we will not allow to increase that, and then we also talk about parking space that each camping unit must be maintained and available for the RV users during the season, in other words.
And that parking isn't authorized along Alphonse Road?
Right, that we're going to, that they, they have to park appropriately, they can't block the roads, they have to have sufficient parking in each of their camp out, camping facilities, their paths, so to speak.
And Mr. Evans and Mr. Heine talked with each other and?
Bring up Matt, he's here. I know Mr. Heine has been, has not had a lot of conversation with me, because he feels pretty confident about the subdivision ordinance and how clear that is, so I haven't had an issue where he's saying, "How do we do the road agreement?" Because we've come back and done the subdivisions, said, "Here's how that road's going to be," so now it's a matter of keeping it where it needs to be. But that piece there, we have, he, Mr. Heine came in once and looked at the subdivision ordinance, says, "All right, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I want to see." So.
Pat, does this fall inside the Highway Fifty-two overlay, or is this outside the overlay?
This is outside the overlay, just outside it, yep.
Any other questions for Pat?
Okay, Mr. Evans is here, if you have any questions for him?
Hi, I'm Matt Evans. I do have a road agreement that was drawn up by lawyers, so once the loan closes and everything else kind of falls into place, that agreement will be also into place, so everybody's in agreeance on how that road will be maintained and operated.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Have you had quite a bit of interaction then with the Heineys in regards to the Hops Farm and the road agreement?
I talked to them after the last meeting. I do have their business card and stuff. I'm just kind of at a standstill right now until everything passes, and then once everything passes, then I'll be in communication with them, and I believe the owner of Whitetail Run also, Aaron Peterson, and then the gentleman who owns the trailer park, Lakeside, Lakeside Trailer Park also, I've been in contact with him, so everybody will, will have to meet with them and get everything sorted out that way.
The difference with the Heineys was mainly that stretch along their vineyard?
Correct. The first half of the road is paved, that was paved, I believe, by the Lakeside Mobile Court, and then after that, it turns into the gravel, which I believe the Heineys did all of that gravel from there to the Hops Field. As far as the entryway into my park, to minimize as much road wear as possible, I'd like to be as close to Dear Boulevard as possible.
For your entrance?
For the entrance, for the approach, and then that will all be to spec as far as the ditch, as county specs, and the road, the width, and the approach width also.
And no overnight?
No. I actually have overnights and weeklies at my Rikens RV Park, because I'm in the ETJ, so I'm allowed that, so it actually works out pretty good. So, any dailies, I'll put at my Rikens RV Park, and any monthlies and yearlies, I'll put over at Yankton RV Park.
And the area between you and the Hops Farm is actually a section line, is that correct?
Correct.
So, eventually, that could be a road?
Correct.
With the plans that they have, that's the way they'll go?
Yep.
Well, I compliment you on the way you made your presentation to the zoning board and the work you've done to bring this through.
Honestly, guys, I work real hard. I work at my dad's shop, I have a locksmith business also, Rikens RV Park when I first got it. I added twenty sites, I added a quarter-mile-long fence, brand-new sod on all the sites, I added bathrooms, showers, laundry, twenty-four-hundred-square-foot event center, boat parking, we'll also have boat parking and extra parking at the new RV Park, so you won't have to worry about parking issues, extra wide roads, extra long sites. I just want to make, excuse me, make everything look really great there, that's my plan.
Any other question for Mr. Evans? Any other statements, Mr. Evans, that you have?
No.
Is there any other public comment in favor of the conditional use permit for Mr. Evans? Is there any opposition for the conditional use permit for Mr. Evans? Is there any opposition for the conditional use permit for Mr. Evans?
Hi, I'm Aaron Peterson. I own Whitetail Run RV Park. It was just a couple concerns. I'm not against him at all, there's plenty of campers for everybody. Welcome to the neighborhood. I guess, I haven't seen a site plan, I haven't been contacted by anybody about anything, about the roads or anything. I guess, what I use off of Deer Boulevard on Gary is about 200, 250 feet.
But you don't have an access, do you, onto Gary?
I use Gary as access, 'cause actually the 33-foot easement comes out about 15-foot into the approach right there. So we just, I contacted the owner of that trailer park there, and we agreed that it would be fine, just to keep, instead of adding onto existing approach, that was wide enough to suffice all of us.
Which side of the road is your pla-
I'm right on the north side of Gary.
The existing campground.
Okay.
Yep.
Right off of Deer Boulevard?
Yep.
Your entrance is off Deer, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
It comes off Deer, onto Gary, and then you go immediately right into the campground. And then we have a exit that's about 150 feet down further. So, I guess I was just wondering if I could see a site plan and stuff, and was wondering, I know the county really got me on my ingress and egress, and I was wondering where he was gonna fall, going in, is it coming right at the corner of my campground? Is it gonna be busy road right there? I know, Pat, we had a discussion out there a couple years ago, when Heine was putting his Hops Farm back there, is, you know, we got an existing road there already, that's on their 33-foot. And then we got the other 33-foot, and I'm just trying to put it in my head, there's 66 feet there, and do we need an interstate running through there? Or, you know, is there some lines that we can just keep using Gary and continuing it to there, and then all share the costs of that road? Just a few.
When Mr. Peterson bought the property, it was the first lot, it was the first piece of property pulled out of that section. Okay? So it didn't, the subdivision ordinance didn't kick in. And so, when, when the proposal came for the Evans property, it's a second lot now, it's another lot. So now the subdivision ordinance kicks in. The subdivision ordinance will write, will dominate all the questions that Mr. Peterson just asked. It will, it will dictate how the roads are gonna be laid out. It will dictate the width of the roads. It's gonna dictate how we grade that property, and it's gonna dictate how we deal with the drainage of that property. The subdivision's extremely specific, and we're watching that weather out there right now, because this is the time that you see the most water in that area, 'cause the ground's still froze, but we're thawing. So, Mr. Evans has to come in, and the subdivision has to come in and show me appropriately, are we gonna do a retaining pond? Are we going to be able to run that to the ditch? Are we gonna, what are we going to do for that grade drainage? That has to be laid out before we do a single campground. Before we do any camping, we have to have all that done. The other piece is, when the subdivision ordinance kicked in, this is within the three-mile radius of Yankton City. And Yankton City then comes in and says, "We want, on every eighth, sixteenth, and section line, the full 66 feet right-of-way." And then my subdivision, our subdivision ordinance kicks in and says, "Yes, and in that 66, we're gonna want at least a 24-foot wide road." And of that, we want X amount hard-surfaced, whether it's gravel, hard, whatever. So we have very specific outlines for that. Mr. Evans has done all the steps that he's supposed to do to make sure that we keep moving forward. Mr. Peterson did have to deal with ingress, egress on his property, because we were coming off of Gary, Gary Drive, Gary Boulevard there. But as we go into this next one here, the subdivision's gonna have a lot more input on this than we ever could do with Mr. Peterson on his, because we didn't have that ordinance, and we couldn't enforce it, because it wasn't kicked in yet. So the questions that he asked were, "How do we handle that road?" It will be a 66-foot. We will not, I'm not gonna go in there, the subdivision doesn't force them to put a full-fledged right-of-way with ditches type of road in there unless it starts to become that. There has to be certain parameters that start falling into place. And when you look at the subdivision ordinance, it'll show, are we doing private drive? Are we doing multiple tenant drive? Or are we even in a neighborhood drive? Or are we even, what kind of road are we making here? What kind of traffic are we dealing with? And each of those then set the parameter for how big or how much that road is developed. So right now, we're looking at that road being, we're gonna take the entire 66-foot, we're going to come in and ask for the 24-foot driving surface on that road, all the way to the Heiney property line. As it keeps, if he develops, we're gonna keep on going. And as they start developing more and more down south, we're gonna keep going too. And that road will probably go all the way over to the public ground to the west, which would be Lake Yankton.
Two questions, Pat.
Are you okay?
When are the subdivision ordinance going to effect?
2012.
2012? And then, the cost to do that road, where does that fall on?
It'll fall on the, on the developers.
So would that be on Mr. Evans?
Yes, yes. Yes, it will. And then, and then as you keep making, and then as you go, as David pointed out, if you go toward, to the west property line of the proposed Evans property, if you went to that, it would be the east property line of the, of the, of the Hops Farm. That's gonna be a 66-foot right-of-way going up to, up to Highway 52 eventually. But right now, we're gonna make it be the 33-feet. So this, the 33-three-feet easement is not an easement, it's what's being dedicated. It's dedicated now. So when we get down with our, with our subdivision, we're dedicating 66 feet from Deer Boulevard all the way to the Heiney property line. With the intention that I can already see some developing coming, and we're gonna start developing it, or dedicating it right on down the line. But, so that answers those questions. As far as the site plan and things, we do have that, that's available. Mr. Peterson can come in the office and get that. I'm also gonna say one time here that I'm sure you got the letters.
Oh, the meeting letters.
Yep, okay. So I, I mean, I don't think it's, I, we gotta be very clear, you have been aware of our process.
Yep.
Okay. And then lastly, this is zoned Lakeside Commercial. And so this is, this is a listed use in a Lakeside Commercial, meeting the conditions that we're looking for. Mr. Evans will have to do probably more than Mr. Peterson had to do regarding, because of the subdivision ordinance. But it's not gonna all fall on him either, because the Christiansen's who currently own that property are the ones that have to make the subdivision possible, and do that process, 'cause they own it until they sell it. And so they're, right now, we're working with that, with those individuals to make the subdivision, to match up with, with Evans' project. We've got a lot of balls in the air on this one, but they're all in the air, and we know exactly what's going on with each of them. And each of them will be, have to have the same requirements and the same types of things as, as, as the other campgrounds have had.
Mr. Peterson, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it was just trying to put in my head, you know, we've been driving in and going out on the north side of Gary, and the trailer court, you know, so it's been just confusing for the traffic there, and, and that, you know, this will clarify it for us. Thank you.
Any other, anyone else would like to speak in opposition of the Evans conditional use permit? Any other questions of the commissioners?
I have one more question for Pat.
Yes.
The application was for a 40, a current 40-unit with expansion to 70.
Correct.
But I noticed that we are, it ended up being approved for a 70, is that how we did it?
We have to get, either we come back again, so we just, he wants, he wants to build 40 with an expansion, the end plan was 70.
All of the same-sized area that we're talking about?
Yes, the same area. And now we're even talking, as, as, as Mr. Evans is visiting with me too, we may need some retention ponding, we don't know for sure. Well, that might take some campgrounds. But 40 is, 40's the site plan, and, but we have enough, enough ground property there for a 70-unit.
Mr. Evans?
Okay, so, I've been working with some dirt crews and stuff like that, and surveying the property, checking out elevation, stuff like that. The issue, before I even bought the land, that I wanted resolved, was to take care of the water problem, and definitely not direct the water problem to anyone else, just to take care of it. I actually have an allowance within my purchase to help me out with that. On the northwest corner, the elevation is around five to six feet higher than the southeast elevation. So there's a lot of water going all to one spot, which is bordering Gary Avenue. So if there was a ditch there, the drainage would be pretty good, 'cause the grade already comes down. My plan is to take the, the five-foot or six-foot elevation that's higher, and take that down, and use that dirt to grade it down towards the ditch, and take all that water, so it doesn't go over onto the existing Whitetail Run RV Park, and so it does not go over to the Heiney's Hops Field. The current property on the north side is Dennis Christiansen's farmland. It's corn right now. That elevation is probably, I'd say, eight to 10 feet taller than the rest. So, the whole thing is to definitely control all-
All roads to the south.
Yep, to control that whole thing. I knew before I even purchased the property that that was an issue, and I should've been more in contact, I guess, with Mr. Peterson. But my goal is to take care of the water problem, so he doesn't have a problem, I don't have a problem, and the Heineys do not have a problem.
Thank you.
A question with Pat, maybe both of you. In the, in the past meeting, the planning and zoning, didn't Mr. Christiansen sell some additional lots to Mr. Breck? Will this water drainage in any way affect the construction on those lots?
Um, no. Those lots are considerably south.
Okay.
Considerably south. But those are lots that we're gonna be looking at playing into, and I talk about that west as we start developing that, that subdivision kicks in there too. Which will, again, those lots are further away, but, again, plays into the same impact. We have to understand drainage, we gotta understand grading as we work our way through those subdivisions. Yes. But this, this property will not affect those lots.
I move approval over to the CUP.
Is there any other, there was no other comments from the commissioners? Uh, Pat? Don, your motion's still good? Based on finding the facts?
Yes.
You have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second, uh-
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, conditional use permit for Carl Schenk.
Thanks, Matt.
This is in regards to, on, it's got a label, 308th Street, is that correct?
That's correct. So, planning commission, recommended approval of a conditional use permit for, based on findings of fact, dated February 13th, for two 2,400-head pork, or finisher swine, over 55 pounds, and 960 animal units each, or 1,920 animal units total per site, Class D finishing barns in Yankton, in an agriculture district in Yankton County. Said property legally describes the east half of the southwest quarter and the southeast quarter of Section 26, Township 94, Range 55. Herein app referred to as Mission Hill North Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-911 address is to be announced, 308th Street, Mission Hill, South Dakota. Now with that announcement, and I, I, I'll read this just so that, and Todd certainly knows this too, but, the process, do you have your list of how that process will work now, since we'll-
Go ahead and read it off, Pat.
Excuse me?
Go ahead and read, read the memo.
Okay. The, the way we've been doing these processes here right now is that, I've introduced the application, so for 10 minutes, or no, for whatever it takes, the applicant produced, can present their application to the Board of Adjustment. Then after that application has been presented, the proponents may speak for 30 minutes, in which the commission chairperson will, will monitor. And then the opponents may speak for 30 minutes. And then after the public presentation, the applicant has 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then after that, the Board of Adjustment takes the meeting and may ask the applicant or other individuals questions for their input. And then, the zoning administrator will go over on the overhead projector there, the findings and the, and the exhibits that we have utilized to make our decision, that we're utilizing to make the decision. If there are any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Schenk, I'll let your representatives present.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Dave Dom, and Ross, Dan, Herter, and I are here with the Schenk's this evening on this application. We think we can economize this presentation and move through it in a thoughtful way for you, and still do it on an expeditious basis. I reviewed the findings of fact from the planning commission, compared those against the application and the supporting data, and I find no corrections or modifications that we think need to be brought to your attention as a result of the material that has, that has been supplied. I will be very brief at going through the items that I think are worth highlighting, and will submit this application for your consideration. First of all, and fundamentally, every one of your setback requirements is exceeded by this application. There are no requests for any changes or modifications in setbacks due to proximity whatsoever. Secondly, access is on 308th Street. The access is not only adequate, but of high quality, and will not be problematic. The facility itself will be operated in accord with all of the requirements of the state agency. All of the operating plans that are needed for waste management will be met unconditionally. That includes the construction requirements, as well as the post-construction operation requirements. This is a covered facility, there will be no solid waste manure. The liquid waste manure will be gathered in a pit beneath the building. It will be disposed of by knifing it into the ground, and it will all be disposed of within five miles of the facility. So there should be minimal odor associated with those activities. There's an odor footprint study in this application that shows that for the nearest-by residents or neighbors of this facility, the annoyance level will only be exceeded a maximum of 2% of the time, and that is about as minimal as you can get. And that, frankly, is a consequence in part of very good site selection for this facility. The engineering here has been professional and appropriate in everywhere, every way. Stockwell Engineering's representative is here to answer any technical questions. I don't intend to spend any time with discussion about the buildings or structures or details themselves. I know that two of you were at the planning commission meeting and have heard that before. The rest of you have seen other applications, and this one frankly is simply without any exceptions that require, or frankly deserve, attention here, I think. So we ask that you adopt the findings of fact that are submitted to you, and approve this application for a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Domina? Any other comments, all by the Schenk's and all? Any questions of the commission of the Schenk permit? Mr. Domina, or to the engineer?
For the engineer, would you like to talk about the construction and how it meets or exceeds standards, or does not? or exceeds standards or does not?
Sure. My name is Brad Warner with Stockwell Engineers in Yankton. We've been engaged by Mr. Schenk to-
Where you got your pocket?
Nothing. I didn't think it'd get that bad, I didn't bring anything.
Maybe adjust the mic a little bit.
I can just sit down, too.
Nice try.
We've been engaged by Mr. Schenk to do the environmental permitting for the site with the DNR. The site, the design of the structure itself, we'll do a site design for grading purposes to make sure we have appropriate grading and elevations, et cetera. Then the structure, the concrete pit, if you will, we'll go through and design it to meet and/or exceed, certainly meet at a minimum, but more than likely exceed the state requirements that the DNR has for these structures.
What are the requirements for the width or the depth of the concrete or the thickness?
There, the kind of this, a standard would be a five-inch reinforced concrete floor and then the footings would be, in addition to the five inches from the floor, they would be an additional five inches, so we'd have 10 inches of thickened footings in the floor with additional rebar as needed depending on the loads from the exterior walls, divider walls, and/or columns within the building. We would look at the soil bearing strength and other tests that we perform on the soil to make sure that we have appropriate rebar to maintain the integrity of the structure.
How thick are the walls? On the pit?
The walls, I would, we haven't designed it yet, but I would say that they would be an eight-inch thick wall is typically what we end up with, and an eight-foot tall wall that would have reinforcement that would be tied back into the floor as well. And then there's a water stop that we would put in any cold joints or interfaces.
Does that rebar 24-inch or 18-inch on center?
I haven't designed it yet, but typically the floors are 18-inch on center, half-inch, grade 60. And then the walls, those really depend on the soils and the bearing of the, it's the equivalent of fluid pressure that the soil exerts on a pit. We assume the pit's empty and the wall and the outside soil is pushing as hard as it should, and we would look at what that stress would put on the walls. It would be a tighter spacing than an 18 typically. It's eight to 10, 12 inches on center, just kind of depends wall heights and loading from the structure itself.
So to determine that, you do soil samples before, or how do you determine?
Yeah, so we would have a geotechnical firm, we don't do it in-house, we have a third-party do it. Geotechnical firm that has geotechnical engineers on staff, they would come out and conduct soil borings. We would need a minimum of two per building typically. They would be anywhere from, the shallowest one would be like six or eight feet below the anticipated floor elevation of the structure, and then the deepest one would be, typically we go 50 to 60 feet down, and then out of that shallow one, we pull a geotechnical series out where they run lab tests on it.
You said it was six to eight feet below the floor?
Correct, yep.
So essentially roughly-
So if the pit's five foot in the ground, we would be six to eight feet below that, so we'd be 11 to 13. I think the state's minimum is six feet for the shallow and then we have to have a deep one. And so depending on the variation of the soils that we see in some background research and then also when they're out there on site, depending on what variations they run into, we may, we may add an additional boring during the time the rig is out there just to gather more data, or if we've got a question on a pocket that we didn't expect to see, try to investigate a little more to get a little better understanding, more thorough understanding. And then all that information gets provided to the DNR and then they have their whole group that will review the geotechnical side of what we present as well as what other information they may have. They're very thorough in their review, so.
Other questions for Mr. Warner? Roughly, Mr. Warner, how many of these types of facilities have you designed in your career?
My career?
Or been part of, maybe it's a better way to ask that question.
Lots of bigger number.
More than 100?
I would say several hundred.
Several hundred?
Yeah. Yeah, we've probably had 50 or 60 in the last six months alone.
That'd be mostly in South Dakota, tri-state area, outside-
South Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, Kansas, Missouri, and then we have some projects right now in Mexico and in Vietnam and China as well that we're working on.
Are these double curtain?
Minnesota, did I say Minnesota?
They're going to be double curtain.
The ones I've worked on are these particular ones?
These particular ones.
They would be curtain barns, yeah. Yeah, and we've gone from curtain barns to a far extreme for top-end genetic clients and parent stock facilities where the hospital filters on the air coming in and everything, so.
Other questions for Mr. Warner?
I was going to just ask you-
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
I want to ask you, you know, I've been around for a while, worked for two different pipelines for three decades, two times for the federal government, lots of engineers I've worked with guys like you before and always-
Don't stereotype all of us, so.
Always good guys.
I don't have a pencil in my pocket today, so.
It's okay. They've always told me one thing, all of them, over the years, there's two kinds of concrete. The ones that's cracked and the one that's going to crack.
And the ones that will, yep.
Yeah, you agree?
I would agree, yeah, yep.
That's all, that's all.
It's just the variation of how, you know, improperly designed, they're going to, they'll fail, as we've seen, you know, in recent-
Earthquakes and floods.
Well, just, or negligence and, I mean, but that's not the intent here.
Thank you.
Never is, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Warner? Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Clay base, we had a lot of clay in South Dakota, correct?
Yes.
So there'd be probably the clay underneath the, would there be a clay underneath the concrete, is that kind of soil layout?
We haven't done the borings yet, I'm assuming we'll see a mixture of material, but clay would certainly be expected out there, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Warner? Mr. Kettering?
I hear a lot of discussion about best practices and discussion in the different barns, and I've spent a little time calling to different places, different sources to try to find out what the trends are in building construction. And everybody that I talk to seems to do these curtain barns unless they're doing it for a sow unit or a specific breeding purposes. What's, what's your, you've said you've done thousand, hundreds or whatever it was, what is your experience in that? What is the practice, the best practice?
Well, certainly for sow units, I mean, filtering the air coming into the barn is We're not seeing a lot of filtering of the air coming out of barns on any facilities, really. Personally, I'm not, at least with our clients and the projects I've been involved with. Whether they're ventilated barns or curtain barns, there's, there's all kinds that go in from the commercial standpoint, but certainly from a genetic or production standpoint or parent stock or the high-end facilities, it's filtering air, but it's filtering the air coming in so that the animals are healthy.
But the majority of them are curtain barns?
Majority of finishing barns?
Yes.
Um, just like in the last year or so, I would say, yes, we're seeing a lot of them, yep. That tends to move around, of course, where we are and what country it's in, et cetera.
I was told by one source that if they had to find a barn that was fully bio-filtered, completely, they couldn't find one in a thousand.
I don't know of any that we've done in the last, and I've been here 16 years this month, and I don't know of any that have come out of our shop that have, that I've put my name on or that we have our name on that is fully filtered outgoing air, that is. But I don't know if one in a thousand is accurate, but I don't know of any-
Are you qualified to explain what the curtains are made of?
I would prefer to defer that to the builders.
All right.
I can embarrass myself in other ways, I don't need to do it that way.
Okay.
But I'm sure they could, I believe we have some in the audience.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Warner?
Thank you.
Is the builder, is the builder here?
Mr. Schenk, you have the builder here?
Yes, there's a builder.
Commissioner Boz has a question for the builder.
I have some questions for the builder.
Can you give your name, please?
I'm Brad Hohn with MDS out of Parkston, South Dakota.
Okay, what are the curtains made of?
Well, you actually have two different materials or two different systems involved. On a curtain barn of this nature, your north-facing curtains will be a, let's call it insulated curtain. Most curtains all consist of some combination of PVC and vinyl and poly. So the north curtains are multi-layers, about seven layers, and the south curtain is a vinyl curtain that's typically translucent, so you get solar gain and you get the, you can pick up light, natural light, and benefits and that nature for the barn, so it's nice and bright inside when they're closed.
Okay. Have they chosen a color for the barn?
That's usually owner preference.
Exactly, I just was wondering if they've chosen a color. I've seen a red one. I thought they're all white. I mean, that's how obviously, I've lost picture, but I've seen a red one, so I-
I've made a lot of references to the cars the last few times I've been here, it's kind of like buying a car, you can pick whatever color you want, so.
The answer to that is white.
Is it, okay.
That's your preference, I'd say.
Yeah, I understand, I just wondered.
Typically, though, in combination with, when you talk colors, what's more important is materials and quality of the materials. Typically in all facilities that I'm associated with, we use a really high-grade of steel referred to as a G90 product, which has got a lot more galvanizing on it, which has been, I guess what we're trying to tell you is it's built for the long haul, we're not looking for something for a six-to-10-year turnaround, we're looking for something that's going to be there 40-plus years.
Okay. So in your opinion, I'm sure you've done a lot of these, is this, are they using best practices in the construction of this building?
Well, best practice is often what works for the producer. And quite honestly, their best practices are they, are they applying the maneuver properly? Have they, they've sought out-
I meant just talking about in the construction of the building.
Oh, definitely, definitely. As a rule of thumb, whether this barn was engineered or not, I and another company that we work with, we build all of them to the minimum of what the DNR would expect, which typically is, I mean, Brad was referring to, you know, typically eight-inch walls and particular rebar specs that, I don't care if it's a 600-head barn, we will follow what we see as the minimum that DNR would approve just because of the fact that we don't want to be associated with short-term industry standards. We, it's a long, it's a long road.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the building?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions at this time from the commission in regards to the conditional use permit, 308th for Mr. Schenk? 308th Street, excuse me. Hearing none, at this time, we'll open up the public comment for the conditional use permit for Mr. Schenk referenced on 308th Street. The first 30 minutes will be for proponents, the next 30 minutes will be for opponents, and then we'll, after that, we'll allow the applicant 10 minutes for rebuttal. So at this time, it's 5:24, or excuse me, 5:25, we'll open up 30 minutes for proponents to speak at this time. If you want to speak in favor of the permit, please approach the podium and state your name.
My name is Charlotte Rommerim and I'm from Union County, South Dakota. I'm here on behalf of Carl and Nancy Schenk. I'm a fifth-generation family farmer where my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather, excuse me, homesteaded our land in 1874. And I tell you that because I want to help you understand somewhat that the meaning of sustainability means sustaining a family farm operation for generations. That has always been the intent of our farm and we've had pig production on our farm for the last over 100 years. I've been part of that family farm with the exception of the time that I was in college. My husband joined my father on our family farm operation and we continue to this day to raise pigs on this farm. We're always look towards continuous improvement of our land and our care for animals because we do have a passion for passing our farm on to the next generation. Currently, we're actually working on the process of bringing our son-in-law into the operation. Our family supports at this time, three fam, our farm, excuse me, supports three families, my father, my husband and I, and the gentleman that works for us, and as I said, we're working into the operation, our son-in-law. This is the same desire that I know that Carl and Nancy have, to pass their heritage and their family farm business on to their sons and daughter, their son and daughters. To keep our farm sustainable to us and for us, we built a hog barn in 2005, similar to what is before you today. I'm a registered dietitian and so not only is what we do on our farm important to me, but the product that we raise is also important to me. And I'm encouraged, and I'm, find it important to provide a safe nutritious product, and I know we are part of doing that for the consumer. So as a pig farmer for my whole life, I have seen many changes made to the care of animals in our lifetime, in my lifetime, and those improvements have resulted in, as the studies show, 78% less land use, 41% less water use, and 35% less carbon footprint according to the study completed by the National Pork Board in, from 1959 to 2009. And so with those improvements to the environment and the individual care, even with those improvements, the individual care for the animal has always been maintained, and the pigs in our barn are safe and comfortable and healthy and cared for just as I've seen my whole life. And I do want to emphasize the fact that the barn that we built in 2005, we cited it so that it would not be any problems for our neighbors, and we were upfront about everything that we did, and we have had, for 12 years, we have had no complaints. We live the closest to the barn and we have had no complaints at all with anyone in 12 years. Family farmers raising pigs like Carl and Nancy Schenk and Megan and Carl and Kira and Erica, they want to do this to sustain the environment and our family businesses and to provide safe and nutritious pork to feed us and feed people around the world. So thank you.
Charlotte, can you spell your last name for the record, please?
It's a hard one. The Norwegians.
Could I, could I ask her a question?
Yes.
I'm like you, my grandfather came here in 1897. Two of his sons farmed, I farmed, I got cousins that farmed some of the family ground. How large is your farm?
In acres?
Acres, yeah. Acres, yeah.
We farm fifteen-hundred acres.
Fifteen-hundred acres, thank you.
And the manure is, the manure from our barn is applied to our land.
One more question, how big a hog barn did you build?
Our barn holds twenty-five-hundred head at any one time.
And is it a finishing barn as well?
Yes, it is a wean-to-finish barn, so we, the pigs arrive at weaning age, and they are there until they are ready to be harvested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak for the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, my name is Jim Petrick, I'm a farmer and pork producer, livestock producer from Gayville, reside maybe seven, eight miles from the proposed site that Carl's working on here, and also a proud owner of a building that was constructed by MDS and Ethan Coop Lumber. One of our buildings was built by these guys about eleven years ago, and I will say that we had some consulting vets walk through there not long ago, and they just marveled at how well the building was aging and the construction, and they thought that it was really put together right, and was built for the long haul, so, proud of that. Got great technical expertise here, you have a great food person here with Shar, that also has a great roots in the farm, and I guess I'm just going to talk to you just for a minute about some of the stuff, we're all influenced by social media, and I watch it, and I watch what's going on in Clay County, I watch what's going on in Yankton County, and I'd just like to address some of the stuff that is bothering me, and maybe if some people would take some time to, to maybe visit a modern livestock farm, I think some minds could sure be changed in the community here. But I see a lot about inside versus outside, and how much better it was in the glory days, and so on and so forth, and as a diversified farmer, you know, we raise livestock indoors in climate-controlled buildings, and we raise livestock outdoors, and, you know, outdoor livestock production is really great when it's sixty-five degrees or seventy, and the sun is shining, and I kind of think it's hilarious that some people tend to confront me on Facebook and tell me how morally and ethically and environmentally superior it is to raise these animals outdoors, because anybody that's raised animals outdoors over the course of the winter, or even the course of the last couple of weeks, understands the challenges that go alongside with that, and we move these animals outdoors, and we have to deal with internal parasites like worms, we have to deal with external parasites like lice, or like manges, we have to deal with predators. So, in terms of my animals' quality of life, in terms of my employees' quality of life, you know, most of the time, we'd like to be under the roof taking care of those inside I saw Gal going on and on about how it's more superior, that we need to be pursuing, dealing locally with farmers and buying only pasture-raised animals, and anything that has a corporate logo on it is bad for your local community, and, don't get me wrong, I'm really proud of that guy that talked her into buying that hog for two or three dollars a pound. I don't begrudge anybody's way of making a living, but as a farmer, as a food producer, you know, Jesus didn't talk about, he didn't lecture us about, let's go make sure that we feed the wealthy food snobs. Jesus talked about feeding the masses, he talked about feeding the poor, and I'm very proud of the fact that right now, you go down to Hy-Vee and buy all the pork ones you want for a buck forty a pound, and how do we do that? We do that by embracing modern technology, we do it by being efficient, by being superior at what we do. We have better husbandry, we have better buildings, we're more efficient, and at the end of the day, that's a decision that we need to make. In the next fifty years, we're going to be probably having to feed close to ten billion people, we're going to have to produce more food in the next fifty years than we've produced since the beginning of time. So, to me, it's a really simple decision, I mean, we can embrace modern food production that is safer, that's more affordable, or we're going to have to decide who has to starve, and it's not a big versus small. One of the poorest pork producers that I have the opportunity to work with, in terms of production, in terms of animal care, in terms of environment, has two S's. I've had the opportunity to visit pork operations on three different continents, and there is no parallel between size and animal care. If you have good people, you will have a good operation, people make the operation regardless of what size it is. I just would like to encourage you to support this exciting time in Yankton County. I look back to when I was a kid, and we're sitting there dwindling it, probably, what, twenty percent of the livestock numbers we had when I was a young man, and I'm excited about what it can bring to the county, because it won't just be the buildings, it'll be all the support that goes with it, it'll be weekend jobs for neighbor kids that want to come in and help sort pigs, or help power wash, or help repair gates, or help maintain the grounds, or what have you, I mean, there's just tremendous amount of opportunities that are going to go along with it, and you see that when you go into some more livestock-dense neighborhoods, so, thank you very much for your time.
Could I, could I ask a question? Were you in 4-H and FFA?
Yes, sir.
Is your dad John, he was?
My older brother, actually.
Okay. Anyway, when I was in 4-H and FFA, there was a Petrick that took my purple ribbon hogs to here on.
Okay.
And back again for free, so.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Good evening, my name is Lynn Peterson, I live at 2208 Valley Road here in Yankton. The issues of CAFOs is obviously a scary thing, and that's very understandable, and I respect both sides of that. Want to talk about a non-issue that we have, I grew up on a family farm, I'm still a livestock producer, or excuse me, a crop producer, I'm not in livestock anymore, I'm very involved in the financing of livestock, and I'm here tonight representing the Yankton County Supporters for Production Agriculture. A non-issue that we have on our family farm, ten years ago, we went through everything that everybody in here is going through. A neighbor exactly one-half mile away from us decided to put up a CAFO, southeast of us, of our family farm. My parents still live there today, they were concerned. We asked the questions, we trusted the producer, the farmer, and he came through on everything. It's been a non-issue for ten years, our quality of life has not changed, we have not noticed anything from detrimental from our health to smell, there is smell occasionally that'll come through, but it's no different than any other farm here in South Dakota. Moving on to another, what I think is a non-issue, is that right here, as we sit in Yankton, we are surrounded by CAFOs. We have almost thirty-five thousand permit head of permitted cattle, one-point-two miles north of Yankton, approximately two miles west of Yankton, three-point-five, or three-point-two miles, give or take, southeast of Yankton, and also four-thousand head right here in the center of Yankton. So, added together, what's almost thirty-five thousand head of livestock, and it's been, what I would call, a non-issue. We're not seeing neighbor issues, we're not seeing complaints, we have the smell in town, there's smell out of town, but all things considered, these people have been excellent stewards of the land, they've been excellent neighbors, and I cannot think of what it would be economically if we did not have these thirty-five thousand permitted head of livestock surrounding us, that supports Yankton, with, whether it be mechanics, whether it be trailer sales, whether it be grain, feed, feed mills, trucking industry, veterinarian industry, all these things are exactly the same thing that we see from a financial benefit here in the hog production industry. There's one other thing that's also tied, that runs right along with the cattle industry that we're talking about today with the hog industry, there's been much concern over the family farmer is not a family farmer, he's a corporate farmer, because he is not, he does not own the hogs that are in the barn. You can go to almost everyone, and I'm not speaking for these surrounding cattle feeders, but I'll bet you, there's a high percentage of livestock in there that they do not own, they're under contract, exactly the same as what these farmers are doing with the hogs in their barn, they're under a contract. If they don't care for those animals, they don't take care of them, put on weight, if they don't do every single thing that that contract says, they're going to lose their contract. When they lose their contract, they lose their cash flow. When they lose their cash flow, they're going to lose whatever it is that they have at some point. So, we've been watching everything that's going on around us, but we don't see the livestock that are around us. Right in the center of Yankton, from Sunday night till Thursday night, especially right about now, this time of year, when the livestock sales are heavy, there is four-to-five-thousand head of livestock housed right here. I don't know what it is, approximately half-mile, three-quarters of a mile from where we stand today, and there isn't an issue. Yes, a few cattle have snuck out and ran through the streets and terrorized people and the police, but other than that, I don't believe it's been an issue. It's been a huge economic driver for Yankton to have people from all over the country bring livestock into our community and to sell them, and then to purchase goods as they leave. That is exactly the same thing as the hog industry, it will provide economic benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. So, about fifteen minutes, does anyone else who would speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Glenn Muller, I'm the Executive Director for the South Dakota Pork Producers Council, and just want to talk a little bit about the industry and the state of South Dakota, and where it's going. The opposition will present some concerns, as we've already talked about, one of those will be human health, and the impact on human health, and we hear all, we've hear that, not only here, I've been here at previous meetings here, but other counties owning hearings. I find it interesting, we refer to Sioux County, and we don't want to look like Sioux County, and we all say that because of the concentration level, but they commissioned a study with the University of Wisconsin, and Sioux County actually has the third-highest health rating for human health in the state of Iowa. Lyon County, right next to Sioux County, has the sixth-highest health rating, is the best health rating in the state of Iowa. So, I think there's a lot of myths associated with the way we used to raise livestock and what we're exposed to versus today. We talk about technology, odor is the other thing you're going to hear, and things are changing. We don't raise hogs the way we did fifty years ago, nor do we want to. Technology is changing, as they've already talked about, and ventilation systems, also on nutrient management, and how we handle our waste, our manure, our nutrients. We don't call them wastes any longer, I misspoke there, but they're nutrients that can be utilized on the farms of these producers, they're diversified, put the nutrients back onto the farm. When we talk about a gold green, it's the all-natural fertilizer available to these individuals. The application today is done, a lot of the application is done with drag lines, we already talked about this, manure is going to be contained underneath the buildings, we've talked about the safety to the humans that are working in these buildings, we've talked about the safety to the animals. I can tell you for a fact, and I can sit at a board meeting with my producers, and it's not infrequent, that they will get a notification from their barn that the sensors have indicated that the status of the air quality or the temperature is out of the specs, and as I make the reference, I think they're monitored a lot closely than some of our community housing that we have for our humans in rental apartments, we monitor our barns that closely. Today's nutrients are applied from those containment pits with drag lines, it's pumped directly from the barn through drag lines, and right to the incorporation equipment, and where it's incorporated, about five inches underneath the ground, so it's not exposed to the air, it's minimizing the amount of odor. We're never going to say that we can raise hogs without odor, but technology has brought us a long ways. In South Dakota, we're seeing tremendous growth and tremendous interest in coming to South Dakota. Two thousand sixteen versus two thousand seventeen, we showed it had a twelve percent growth, a number of hogs in the state. Now, are we overrun with hogs? No, that growth showed we had one-point-four million hogs in the fourth quarter of 2017, in 1935, we had three-point-two million hogs on inventory.
What was that year again?
1935.
And one-point-four was at the end of seventeen?
That was the fourth quarter of 2017. So, the industry has changed, much as I drove down here and I think about, our local towns have changed, our small communities, everybody had a hardware store, everybody had a lumberyard, today, we have the Menards, we have the Walmarts, so things change, they've changed in agriculture, we have larger facilities, concentrated facilities, and the industry has changed, and why do they want to come to South Dakota? Because we have such a sparse population of hogs, we have isolation, so the hogs can stay healthier, these producers are concerned about that as well, they want to maintain some distance between barns so that they can maintain that high-health status. We also have a wider grain basis, we have cheaper grain than they do in Iowa, this is going to help increase our grain demand for our farmers, our grain farmers. We've already talked about, Jim did a good job of talking about the support, and the other gentlemen here, your electricians, your feed mills, and everybody else is going to benefit from this, plus your tax base. Each one of these barns is going to be about three-quarters of a million dollars to build, and that's going to go into your tax base. I've sat here on occasion and hear you talk about how we're going to fund the infrastructure. We need to have a tax base, and this will build a tax base. I think that we're going to see tremendous growth in the state, I know we're going to see tremendous growth in the state. I've been contacted, I know there's at least, a minimum of fifty barns wanting to come into the state right now, that wanting to build in the state, looking for a location, and I know it's, it gets very emotional, but the responsibility that you've been assigned is to implement and enforce the ordinances that you have for Yankton County, and I think Yankton County has a real opportunity to benefit from the growth and the value added, and I would encourage you to support the Shinks in this project.
What's your opinion on the use of pipelines laying in the ditches versus trucks pulling the manure out of field?
Gary, let's, I, sorry, let's reserve this time for the proponents in regards to, in regards to the application, I don't think that's, we want to take that time up right now, we can discuss that after that.
And I've not spoke with the applicant, if that's their intent, but that technology is there that may be implemented on the under road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have about seven, eight minutes, anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, my name is Lynn Lyons, I live at 308 44, 447th Avenue in Mission Hill, I'm about three-and-a-half miles from Carl and Nancy's proposed site, and I live less than a mile from a building that's been there since we moved to that property sixteen years ago.
Another hog barn?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The ground that we live on is surrounded by ground that has had hog manure put on it every other year, the sixteen years that we've been there. We have a couple of days, maybe, where I don't open the windows if it's warm, after they do their application, a couple of times a year, maybe, I'll get a whiff from across the field if the wind is just exactly right, and wait ten minutes, and the wind changes, and it's gone. Smell is not an issue. If you're on that property, smell is not an issue ninety percent of the time. I'm going to talk about the emotional side of this for just a minute. I believe family farms are sacred, and the people that are coming before you, wanting to build these buildings, are trying to save and maintain their family farms, and I believe that it is important for all of us to help them do that in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak in favor of the conditional use permit? We have some time yet.
John Gunderson, Irene, South Dakota. I'll try and answer his question. Gary, it's better to run a hose in the ditch than tankers back and forth on the road and beat the road to pieces, we got enough problem with the roads in the county without running load after load. It's a simple technology, it works very well, yes, they use the right-of-way in the road, but would you rather be putting more traffic on the road or running a pipe alongside the road? My thought is that we're better off running the hose, and... My thought is that we're better off running the hose and saving the road, whether it be the county road or a township road. The other thing that, those of us my age grew up in, and one of the great stories of education and economics, when I was a kid, was George Washington Carver and the Peanuts. And down south, they'd planted cotton where they grew in the ground, and they had to do something to improve the ground again. George Washington Carver came up with planting peanuts, and everybody planted peanuts, and all of a sudden, everybody was growing broke planting peanuts. And so he went into the lab and found all sorts of things he could make out of peanuts, starting with peanut butter. In a similar story, about forty years ago, there was a woman in Mexico City, Mexico, at the university, running a graduate class in agronomy. And it was after Christmas, and she had her graduates there, she holds up this Christmas card, and she said, the gringo says that this is zia maiz, the extinct version of corn. And she goes, "It's not extinct, I've seen it, but I can't remember where this plant is." And he's found some of these seeds up in Chaco Canyon. So, the first egg is the first person that brings me a plant. And so, you know, the guy in the back row, twice the guy in the back row, raised his hand, and goes, "Well, that's a weed at my dad's place. Well, where's that?" "Well, it's up in the mountains." And the other guy in the other corner goes, "Well, that's a weed, my dad's down in the desert." And not through genetic modification, but just plant breeding that everybody has done for generations, they took that desert plant, and instead of the leaves, pardon me, flopping like this, the leaves stick pointed up, it's like pineapple plants. And about thirty years ago, those genes got into our corn by breeding, and you could put the plants closer together, you could go to thirty inch rows, you can go to a higher population. But that desert plant was a little something else. They found out that out in the desert, there's little holes in the bottom of the leaves called soma. And during the day, those holes close in that desert plant, and the plant doesn't lose moisture. It's taken longer to get that genetic adaptation to a dry climate into the plant. Pioneer Seed Corn calls that Aquamax. Channel, Monsanto uses something else. But the genetics are there, and what it in effect has done is moved the line where you can grow high yield corn about two hundred miles further west, from the Sioux River out to the Missouri River. And it has also increased the yield, and if you look at the average corn yield in the country, guess what? Yankton County is getting close to DeKalb County, Illinois, because of those two genetic modifications in corn, not GMO CRISPR, but just plain plant breeding. So we've grown all this corn, and what do we do with it? Well, of course, most of it in this part of the world goes to alcohol plants. And a lot of that alcohol goes out, goes out to the West Coast, goes down south, we produce a lot of alcohol. But there's also a byproduct in alcohol production, and it's distowers grain. Takes a lot of energy to dry it, if you can feed it wet, great. But it's a good feed source. So we have an abundance of feed, and we have no livestock. In one word, that's opportunity. And I think we in this area, in eastern South Dakota, are presented with a wonderful opportunity. And I am proud to be part of people who are trying to take advantage of that for ourselves and for our kids. Because frankly, my kids, my son and daughter are the reason we got into this. I know that's a big part of what Carl and Nancy have done, and what Cuts have done, and Louis and Josh. And so I urge your approval of this, and I want you to think of the economics of how this works. We're producing a lot of grain, we can be a low budget, low margin producer, in effect a third world company, country for somebody else. I've shipped corn over to Sioux Center, Iowa, because they've got a corn deficit. I'd rather feed it here. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about a minute left. Does anyone else have a short comment in regards to speak in favor of the permit?
Short and sweet. We've listened.
State your name.
Oh, Robert Fring, four four eight seven seven three oh fifth street, a few miles away from Carl, Louis, the rest of the guys. And we've got, we fought for what, ten years over arguing over how this process and everything goes for setting up all these rules. We have the rules set up, laws are set, they're meeting every one of those, it's not some question that you ask, pull out of the sky or something. You are required by law to abide by those laws that we enacted, and if they produce, do what they're said, what they need to do, then by law, you guys are required to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the time now is five fifty-five. That will close the comments in support of the conditional use permit. We will now open up the floor for the next thirty minutes, that's five fifty-six, for anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of the permit.
Good evening. My name is Paige Herrick. I live at four four six two eight, three hundred and eighth street in Mission Hill. And I hope I'm not flying under false colors, and I hope I don't disappoint anybody, because I'm not gonna stand up here
You're supposed to be addressing us.
What's that?
You're supposed to be talking to the commission.
I couldn't hear.
I said you're supposed to be talking to the commission.
Oh, I thought everybody was gonna listen.
Well, they'll listen.
Okay. I don't want to be flying under false colors, but I'm not gonna stand up here and say I'm against CAFOs, and that I don't want them allowed in Yankton County. I'm gonna say a lot of things tonight, and because I'm an equal opportunity speaker, I think probably everybody in this room is gonna be angered by something that I say. But fortunately, we're not on a college campus, and you can't cite me for microaggression, but unfortunately, you cannot move to a safe space where people are not allowed to say things that you disagree with. Now, before I get into the business of tonight, I want to clear up a couple things, at least in my case, I can't speak for anybody else, but in past meetings, the people that have been opposed to CAFOs have been referred to as anti-farm, anti-agriculture, and radical environmental extremists. First of all, I don't understand how any native Midwesterner could be opposed to agriculture. I myself grew up on the family farm that my great-grandfather established in the eighteen eighties, and it's still in the family, unfortunately. After six generations, the family is too big for everybody to have a part of it. Now I know that everything I own that's made of leather, cotton, wool, or linen started with a farmer. I know that everything I eat, except for wild game, wild seafood, and salt, comes from a farmer. I start my day with a hot beverage brewed by ground beans that were produced by a farmer. I end my day with a cold beverage brewed from wheat, barley, and hops that were grown by a farmer. Now we can live without doctors, might not live as well, might not live as long, but we can live without them. And we can live without lawyers. We might even live better, especially if we get rid of that infamous firm of Dewey Cheatham &amp; Howe. But we can't live without firms. Now the second thing I want to address is the environmental extremism. Now, today, environmental extremism is almost exclusively on the left by the liberals. But yet, forty-eight years ago, the EPA was brought into existence, brought into existence by executive order of a very conservative president. Now, I'm not afraid to admit that I lean to the right. I'm opposed to communism, socialism, collectism. I'm opposed to punitive taxation and the redistribution of wealth. I'm opposed to a bloated federal government full of unnecessary, ineffective bureaucracies that suck up our tax dollars and produce nothing. We need a government to protect society from the individual and protect the individual from society. We need the government to do things that we cannot do as individuals. But we don't need a government that intrudes unnecessarily into our personal lives on a daily basis. There are some governmental departments that are vitally necessary. Couple of examples would be the State Department, Department of Defense, Treasury Department. However, we don't need bureaucrats telling us how to build or rebuild our cities. We don't need a Department of Education to tell us what and how to teach our children. And I think we're all tired of having the government dictate the design of gas cans, how our lawnmowers function, and what our youth can and cannot do on the family farm. Upon what side of the political fence you stand isn't important. It's only necessary to remember that there are people on each side of the fence that are concerned about the problems CAFOs can create. Now I might talk about some of the negative aspects of CAFOs tonight, not in detail whatsoever, but you will not hear me say that I am opposed to them. Likewise, you will not hear me say that I want to see them built. And at times, my speech will sound like it's not going anywhere, and doesn't have anything to do with today's issue. But I think if you keep listening, you'll find out that it does. I want to talk a little bit about the manner in which the English language has been bastardized recently, in order to suit individuals or groups' goals, simply because they think the rest of us are so unintelligent and uneducated that we are incapable of pouring liquid body waste out of a piece of high-top leather footwear. During the past few winters, we keep hearing about significant weather events. We used to call them blizzards. But I think this really irritated a lot of the self-appointed intellectual elitists, because it didn't make them sound very smart. And they didn't want to use a word that's used by those people who they consider uneducated and scratching out a living on the windswept plains of what they call a flyover country. Another newly invented phrase that irritates me to no end, and we're not getting into a political speech here, we're talking about our language. And it just irritates me to no end that people refer to something called an assault rifle. They're calling semi-automatic rifles assault rifles. There's no such thing as a classification like that. The anti-gun people have coined this term in order to infer that its only purpose is to assault people. The first semi-automatic assault rifle, or semi-automatic rifle
Mr. Hirings, is this in speaking in
We're getting to that. I've got one sentence left.
All right.
And then we'll get to production agriculture. But the first semi-automatic rifle, I said we, you'd think this wasn't going anywhere. The first semi-automatic rifle was produced in eighteen eighty-five, so why has it taken a hundred and thirty-three years to come up with this new term? I mean, many things can be used to assault people, including knives, hatchets, and tire iron. Why aren't people up in arms because auto manufacturers provide a free assault tire iron with the purchase of every car? Now, the last example I want to bring up is the term production agriculture. Isn't that wonderful? Yeah, it's wonderfully redundant. Agriculture has always been about production. Every business is about production. The very definition of business is an organization designed to produce a profit by producing and selling goods and/or services to people who are uninformed and don't think, and/or don't think, it sounds like something great. Who could be opposed to agriculture? Who could be opposed to production? Unfortunately, it's a misleading term used to make people think that something that can have not very good consequences is really benign, if not glorious. Now, we're still gonna talk about tonight's issue, but we gotta remember that the NRA says that guns don't kill people, people kill people. Okay, I've never seen a gun walking around killing people, so I have to believe that. It might also be said that CAFOs don't damage the environment and endanger the health of the community. People do. Now, don't get me wrong, I have nothing against any of these applicants. I don't hate them, I don't dislike them, I don't have any animosity toward them. It's like church. We hate the sin, but we love the sinner. Now, a more accurate term, well, here we get to a point where the government can protect society from the individual. And a more accurate term for CAFO would be industrial protein production facility. But, by the way, don't let anybody tell you they weren't called that because you can't pronounce the acronym IPF. Now, the federal government has numerous laws and regulations designed to protect people and the environment from irresponsible industry. So far, the powers that be actually think that CAFOs are really agriculture and are truly harmless. Theoretically, we have an opportunity for our government to require responsible CAFOs, albeit county government, while it's doubtful that any CAFO can be built to eliminate all the opposition from anybody that might be minutely opposed to it, there are many things that can't be done to make them safer. Now, these can be done by having our government require that certain conditions be met. Now, the county can do that, but I'm afraid they've been doing it backwards. They sit up here and they list a whole bunch of conditions that could be put on, believe it or not, a conditional use permit, and they ask the applicant to decide whether or not they want to do it. Now, I would just like someday here at the county commission say to the applicants, "We would really like to see you earn your living by producing pork for China, but at the same time, we are sworn to protect the citizens and the environment of Yankton County. Therefore, we are going to impose the following conditions." And then go ahead and state those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Have about fifteen minutes yet?
No, we have about
Got fifteen minutes. Don't, got fifteen minutes.
Hi. Amy Wishan. I live at three zero eight four eight, four hundred and forty-fourth Avenue. I'm about half a mile from the proposed hog barns. My family enjoys spending time outside on our farm. The kids invite friends over, play basketball outside, sit around the fire pit, and sometimes just explore through the trees. We have a field down below our house that we turned into a little baseball field. Kids utilize this a lot. We sometimes invite family and friends out, have wiffleball tournaments. It's a great environment for It's a great environment for our kids and their friends to hang out instead of sitting in front of a TV, playing video games all the time, or going to parties and getting in trouble. We also have a large garden that we enjoy tending to during the summertime. Can you guarantee my family that these barns being built the way they are will not affect my family's way of living? Yes, no?
You're asking us if we can guarantee your way of life?
Yep.
I don't think anybody can guarantee that.
Okay. When there were cell towers that were going up around the lake area, you guys went out to their houses to address their concerns. In the January 3, 2017 meeting, it was stated that, by Pat, that he would not issue a CUP for cell towers until, I believe, a Mrs. Brady and a Mrs. Yonkey were content. Again, he went around to all the areas to make sure the residents were okay and happy with the location of these towers and made sure that their needs were being met. He also said, "Let's work as well as we possibly can in coming up with a compromise with area residents." He worked for everybody back in January, the residents and the applicants. Right now, I feel he only works for the applicant. No one, I just want you guys to know, no one came to my door to address my concerns. Nobody came and talked to me about what was being proposed and how we can try and make this work for everyone, or at least the majority. All I got was a letter. I don't believe any of the residents got talked to. Deb, you were upset about these towers going up in your neighborhood. You were worried that the residents would have to stare at a shiny silver pole sticking out when they drive up their property. I believe it was going to be eight inches in diameter and anywhere from 30 to 50 feet high. Not sure how high they ended up going. These hog barns will be 53 by 396 feet, and you can't really disguise these as a flagpole or a tree. In fact, you haven't even made a shelter belt a requirement on any of these barns, which is not using management practices. Also, in the January 3, 2017 meeting, Deb, you said, "I appreciate the property owners who spoke up about encroachment or something that's going to be negative towards property values or their way of life. If you think a simple tower is going to have that effect, what do you think these barns will do?"
I appreciate you people speaking up as well.
You have not shown any appreciation, you have not addressed any of our concerns. You also said, "There are things that, once we open the door, there may be other people or other things that come or want to come and use this as a measuring stick, that we allowed this, and we have to allow the next thing." So I'm a little bit hesitant and appreciate the people that have spoken up in those regards. And as long as I'm on the commission, we'll look at the next thing as equally, with equal scrutiny, and keep all their concerns in mind. As I stated earlier, no one came to my door to address any concerns I might have. Do you feel you have had our concerns in mind? And have you addressed them?
Are you addressing me?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you addressed our concerns?
We're following the ordinance, letter by letter.
Dawn-
Could I ask you, excuse me, could I ask you one more time?
Yep.
Where do you live in relation to this application?
About half a mile.
Which direction?
South.
Thank you.
Dawn, in the January 3, 2017 meeting, you said, "This is a society, and we have lots of different views of what's wrong, what's right and wrong, good and bad. To me, this is no different than an environmental issue on a hog facility." And again, these are your words. "If the smell bothers one person and doesn't bother another, or if the person is 15 miles away, you end up having to do what's best for the whole community. We aren't going to satisfy everybody on everything we do. We have to do it for the good of the entire county." Those were your words, Dawn. Do you feel you've been acting in the best interest of the entire county?
That sounds pretty intelligent to me. Sorry.
You don't think you said those words?
No, I absolutely do. It says, I agree, I'd say them again today.
Okay. Later on in the meeting, you also said, "I'm back with the environmental thing with agriculture and virtually every other industry that might come in. There's always somebody that's not going to be in favor of it. They're not going to want trucks driving by their house and a thousand other reasons why people like their panoramic views. Unfortunately, we're in a society, we're growing, and we need to do what's best for the entire community." Throughout this entire process, on none of these barns has anything been done with the entire community's best interest in mind. If you want to put the community's best interest at ease, then you have two choices: deny these barns and don't let them build, or you can make them enclosed buildings with biofilters and shelter belts and use best management practices. You weren't voted in by just one applicant, you were voted in by the residents of Yankton County. I'm asking that you stick to your words and choose what's best for Yankton County and its residents.
Thank you. At 6:15, we have about nine more minutes.
My name's Dan Dolish. I live at 30732 444th Avenue, about a mile northwest of the proposed site. I'm just one of many of over a dozen families that live in this area around this proposed site, from a half mile to up to a mile away. Some of them are family farms, some of them are family rural residents. We've all lived out here for a number of years. I'm just asking you to not approve the conditional use permit for these two 2,400-head facilities. The reason I say that is because I know there's a lot of places in this county, and I'm not sure about all the land that Carl owns, but I'm sure there's other areas in the county that these large facilities can be built that are not going to affect as many families. I mean, we're talking, we're only a mile away from Mission Hill here, from the west, so we're getting really close. I know he has other sites. There's just got to be a way to do this. It's just too many people that are being affected by this. And I hope you look at that, and I hope you put some issues on here that will help the people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. 6:17, we have time for anyone else like to speak in opposition?
I'm a little further away than the first barns that we talked about.
Please state your name for the record.
Dale Hebda, 110 Produce Road, Mission Hill, South Dakota. Made some notes as the conversation started. Best practices is a really wide term. Some industries have standards that they measure them against, others, they develop them by themselves. One of the folks that spoke in favor cited a study done by the National Park Board. Might be biased. No, no. Quality of life for a few or for the many. We talked about 35,000 head of livestock within so many miles of Yankton, and I think it was 3,500 to 4,000 head that are right here in the city. That's called a sales barn. We're not raising them there. Air quality. Why do we concern about the air quality going into a barn and not the shit coming out? Doesn't make much sense. Why are we taking more care of the animals than we are the people? The construction of the facility. The person that's building it said that the sidewalls have a 40-year life. Why? Cheapen it up. The building won't last that long. Cut your cost. Mr. Petrick talked about Jesus and feeding the poor. We donate food from our farmer's markets that's leftover to the food pantry here in Yankton. I asked the people at the food pantry, "How many farmers are bringing in product to your service?" Stopped them. They couldn't answer. There was also comment about good people make the operation. Your decision to approve or disapprove any of these barns is on the quality of the people that they hire, because the majority of them are not going to be doing it themselves. I don't have a problem with the people that own the land. It may be with the people that they hire. I'm not an expert on hog barns, don't claim to be. The gentleman that spoke on behalf of the South Dakota Producers, of the Pork Producers Association, talked about the monitors, and that they're notified immediately when things are out of specs. Do we solve the problem, or do they go out of specs again? Talked about the economic impact that it has on Yankton County, that these barns are going to cost approximately $750,000 piece to build. What about the property loss of the values surrounding them? There's a conversation about the desert plant, the mountain plant, and the yields, and that we increased them. And I believe that's true. We can take genetics and we can do certain things to improve yield quality. But when nitrogen came in, nitrogen fertilizer, it boosted the yields tremendously. I grew up in the Flat River Valley in Nebraska. Guess what our first issue was with nitrogen, nitrates in the water? We have about a 30-foot water table down there. We had kids getting sick. And this was about '68 to '72, and then we've got all the nitrogen regulations that started coming into play. Our decisions that we're making today, the results aren't going to be known for 30, 40, 50 years potentially. And who's responsible for that result down the road? There was also a comment made about you have to approve it based upon the laws and the regulations that are in front of you. And a certain part of that may be very true. But is there not a concern for those that are already there? At my first presentation to the commission, I talked about the concern of nitrates or pathogens that could potentially be moved from these barns. The head of the commission at the time, when I asked for air quality control monitors to be put up and monitored, said, "Good luck with that." That doesn't sound to me like it's a concern for an existing business that's already there. So as I look at Yankton County right now, and this may be blunt, I'm sorry, I'm Polish. No, not really. I'm proud to be Polish. But money talks and BS walks. Thank you.
Thank you. There's about four minutes left in regards to opposition.
Sir.
Dr. Penn.
Dr. Penn.
About four minutes left. Anyone like to speak in opposition of this conditional use permit?
Patty Graham Cole, 4313 Herman's Loop. A lot of the statements made tonight are untrue. Car Gill did not pay for their road, and I want that on the record.
I didn't say they paid for it. They're going to pay for it in payments. They didn't, came through South Dakota-
This is my time.
I can, I can talk to you.
We are not talking about cattle, Mr. Peterson. Let's compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. And we are not talking about a hog barn that someone's going to live on. Mr. Schenk lives in Dakota Dunes. I wonder. Half the stuff said tonight is not applicable in this situation. And a pork producer speaking about a pork producer's study? We have given you well-documented cases by universities. There should be no bias in those. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Got two minutes yet for any other opposition that would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Kristy Schultz. I live at 44121 304th Street. There appears to be some confusion about how the Yankton County ordinance works. I have been a member on the Yankton County Planning Commission for 12 years. People are under the impression that just because someone applies for a conditional use permit, and they meet the minimum requirements, that it is automatically granted to them. That is simply not true. The purpose of a conditional use permit is that it is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. The reason it's called a conditional use permit is so that the county can put conditions on it. I am asking this county to do what is in the best interest of all of the residents of Yankton County and follow Section 105 in Article 1, where it says, "The provisions of this ordinance shall be held to the minimum requirements adopted for the, quote, 'promotion of the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the residents of Yankton County.'" This does not do any of those things for the residents of Yankton County. This is for the benefit of one person. And all of the surrounding neighbors have to suffer the consequences. Consequences of reduced property values. Consequences of damage to the roads. Possible consequences of damage to the aquifer. Because this manure holding tank has no thicker walls than we are planning to put in our basement, guess what happened about a year after our basement was built? The walls cracked. And we had not only rebar in those walls, we also had fiber and we had red rock in those walls. And he said that they were going to have a five-inch footing-
Mr. Schultz? One minute.
A five-inch footing? We're putting four-foot-deep footings underneath our floor in our basement. Why are we not requiring more of them? This thing should be built to last 100 years, not 40. And who's going to pay to reclaim the damage that is done, not if, but when it does leak and possibly contaminates the aquifer? Once that aquifer is contaminated, there is no fixing it. And what are all the neighbors supposed to do? Are they supposed to buy bottled water for their animals? Because the water won't be safe to pump out of the ground anymore. I am asking, if you want to approve this permit, then make it a closed-sided barn. Why can't Yankton County be on the cutting edge of technology instead of lagging back to the same technology that has been used since 1980s with open curtain barns?
Mr. Schultz, your time is up.
I ask that you deny this permit as it is presented. We don't even have soil borings yet. He hasn't even drawn up the plans yet.
Thank you.
Sit down.
That closes the 30 minutes for opposition. We will now open up for a 10-minute rebuttal period by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, first of all, let me just say that Mr. and Mrs. Schenk are here. They heard every concern expressed by their neighbors. They appreciate those concerns. They've had discussions about those concerns, and they are sensitive to them. And I think the best way to get at the history of the Schenk family and proof of the sensitivity they have for those concerns is to make it public. This is the fifth generation of Schenk's that have lived in the Mission Hill area that are before you tonight, and they propose that these barns be operated by the sixth. The first generation came here a little while after the Civil War. And they came here because they lived in Russia. They were offered an opportunity, or promised an opportunity, to farm in Russia, and the Russian government didn't obey the law. Didn't keep its word, didn't honor its commitments reduced to statutes and regulations and ordinances because it wasn't a government of laws. So they came to the United States before South Dakota was a state. In fact, before Dakota was a territory, and they established themselves in this location. After- After one generation, the second generations of Schenk's were so poor, they lived on the, what became the Yankton County Poor Farm. That's now the headquarters of the Schenk family operation. And I think I'm right, it's the closest residence to this proposed facility. They'll be there another generation. They'll be there when these buildings are 40 years old. They'll be drinking the water, or suffering the consequences of mistakes with the people who have concerns expressed here tonight. And they will make sure these facilities work. They're committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments by the applicant at this time? Denise is Pat.
And it's gone home. We can go through all the items that they have submitted, if you want to. Everything is pretty much.
Go to the microphone, Denise. So just to be, to let everyone know, Pat's been dealing with some health issues for the last week. So I know we talked today, he was going to try to power through, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to.
I can go through this PowerPoint, I can go through each aspect if you want.
Yeah, we can talk on the mic, though.
Or I can also say everything was in this binder. There's not one person that has come, looked at it, or checked it out, or anything like that.
I think we'll go, the findings and facts are before the commission tonight. In regards to the conditions that have been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board, we can address, if you want to touch on those, Denise.
I certainly can. We have Application 3138, followed by the building permit that has been signed but not Pat already spoke about the findings of fact for the Planning Commission. Action 2131-8G was found that six members voted in the Planning Commission, and one voted, six, seven voted, and six were a, one was a nay. Do we want to go through every item here?
Pat touched on these before.
Yes, he did.
The conditions that are laid out in the findings of facts, this is a conditional use permit. It lays out in the findings of facts, the conditions that are required by our zoning, I believe under Section 519. Since the size of this facility is a Class D by our ordinance, they have to apply for a state permit, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
They also have to comply with the condition of a stormwater permit, nutrient management, waste management, mortality. I mean, there is multiple conditions in the, in the findings of fact. Is there a variance at all in regards to this? I did not see any, but I want to make sure.
There is not a variance.
Talks about the order footprint as a condition in here. Talks about, you know, the feeding operation and facility management plan. These are all conditions that the applicant needs to abide by before a building permit will be issued. It talks about the order footprint. Talks about the design of the building.
The distance from waterways, the distance from wells.
The findings of fact have addressed every issue that's been brought to us in prior meetings, and based on our county ordinances. Is there any questions of Denise at this time in regards to this conditional use permit?
Denise, in regards to the concerns of soil borings, because this is a D and R application, those do not need to be done until after the CUP meeting here. Is that correct?
That is correct. If the conditional permit is denied tonight, there would be no reason to get soil borings and everything beforehand. What the Schenk's are here to do is to see if the conditional use will be approved before any of this is finished.
Other questions for Denise?
I want to clarify a point. Denise, you indicated that nobody had come in to check this out. I was approached by a citizen of the county, and they wanted to know what they could do, didn't want, couldn't able, didn't want to spend the $400, and I shared the information folder that I had with them. So for total transparency, everybody, I don't know who has looked through this on the other side, but it's been accessed on the other side.
Yes, Mr. Dolish came in prior to the Planning Commission, when this was made public to the Planning Commission members, and got a few sheets out of here. And we stated at the Planning Commission that if anybody wanted to come in, they could sit down and review this binder, or if there were some sheets that they wanted us to make copies of, or put on a flash drive, that I would do that. And I never received one call for anybody coming to the office to take a look at it. I know the Director of Equalization directed somebody to come to look at it, but they walked right past the office, so.
Any other questions for Denise?
They've met all the conditions that our zoning ordinance says they need to meet.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
One thing we haven't mentioned is the access. I think maybe Mr. Domine did, but they do have, had to establish sufficient access and a turnaround for their emergency vehicles, and they've met that.
And that's in the findings of fact.
Yes.
Yes, that's covered.
There are, how many pages, findings of facts?
I believe there's 38 total pages.
Thirty-eight. All their letters have been sent out three times. Complied with everything.
Thank you.
All the legals have been put in the newspaper, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'd open up for discussion amongst the commissioners in regards to this conditional use permit.
Well, what I'd like to state is it's pretty obvious that there's an abundance of evidence on all sides of this issue that make it questionable, I shouldn't say questionable, I should say make it, can build a point that either the pros or the anti-people could use as evidence for their opinions. Nothing's clear, clean, that, you know, I guess I challenge some of the universities, as well as the pork producers, on some of the thoughts that they have. So then I kind of revert back to common sense and talking to people involved in the industry. And I just haven't found huge health issues anyplace I've gone. And I think we have an obligation and a responsibility, and beyond that, I promote the approval of the application.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
I would like to mention the assessed value of adjacent properties, and the comparisons that we've found, or that have been provided to us, and that there, it has not been an appreciable loss in property value on any of these, whether it was in Sioux County or elsewhere. Property values have not gone down of residences within the vicinity of hog barns. The most stunning one to me was the fact that a daycare had built, I guess the hog barn was there since 2012, and the daycare built in 2016, within eyesight of the hog barn. And had found nothing adverse about having a daycare that close to the hog facility. So I too would vote in, recommend that we vote in favor of this.
May I ask Denise one question?
Absolutely.
One, a person present, behind a podium, mentioned a mile from Mission Hill, the site, how, do we know exactly how far from the city of Mission Hill this location is?
It's, yeah, I was going to say one and a half.
Yeah.
But one, yeah, about one and a half miles. Not quite, I don't think.
It'd be a half a mile from my homestead, our headquarters, and then three quarters a mile to the corporate limits of the city of Mission Hill. It goes over.
I would like to address, if I may, a couple of the concerns brought up by the public. We hear a lot about, a lot of conversation about barn design, and we need to take into consideration, as a board here, that this is a finishing unit. A lot of the times, when it comes to a possible biofilter aspect, or whatever, these may be in regards to a farrowing facility, or a nursery, where your temperatures have to be held at a much higher level, and humidity's kept out. So I think we need to remember, design of, this is a finishing facility, which has different, the engineer would be able to speak in regards, has different aspects to it than a nursery or a sow unit. In regards to the concrete, there is concern about concrete. I know of a facility that was built in 1979, and it's still, the product removal from there twice a year, since it has a small pit, is the same as it was at original design. So these, the concrete, the structure of it, listen to the engineers here again, and the people building them. These have longevity, that the facility is nine, 39 years old this year. Another aspect that we need to consider as a panel up here, is we hear about pathogens. I know of a facility that is selling hay out of it to horse people, to goats, to sheep, and they've been doing this for multi-years, and the fans to that facility are within 100 feet of the hay. So these, the quality, the air coming out of there is, is not, we need to keep that in consideration, that there are ways to work around the pathogen aspects of these. I guess, and the key point here is, I wonder how many farmers in the county didn't work for someone else for some period of time before they were allowed, or were able to farm. There are many in the county who still are not farming, because it hasn't worked out. They are working in town. So given an opportunity to expand for another generation in such a fashion, I think we need to hold great consideration for also.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the commissioners? I do want to touch on one topic. The discussion of biofilters has been brought up multiple times. I reached out to SDSU and spoke with Bob Thaller, Joseph Darrington, and also with the Department of Ag, David Skaggs, to inquire about biofilters. And at this point in time, SDSU was studying biofilters, and they said, "Right now, there's not enough data to give definitive answer if they are working or not working." Dr. Nicolai, now is retired from the university, but one of the things they did say, some is that if the building is designed for it, it may help. But if it's, you're retrofitting a building to make it work, there, it hasn't been proven to work. One thing they did say is that it increases strain on fans, so the fans burn out. One thing it does, too, it attracts rodents. Biofilters have become a haven for rats. So right now, there's a lot of studies going on in regards to this, but there's not definitive proof that it works at this point in time. Dr. Thaller did say that the hog barn that is on the, half a mile from Brookings, does have a biofilter on that barn, but it's not in effect. It's not being used at this point in time. So we talked about some of the tools that are available, whether it's the order footprint, the biofilters, but right now, there is still not conclusive evidence on one side or the other in regards to the biofilters at this point in time, but they are continuing to study it. And until that comes to be more definitive answers, that's something I would wait for from our university here in South Dakota State. Any other comments at this time?
Pat, why didn't you call a research farm? They're the ones who actually do the research.
Thank you, the public comment is done, and Bob Thaller is part of that, a part of that research farm.
He's also part of the finding.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Discussion? At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the conditional use permit in front of us at this time.
I move we approve the initial, or the conditional use permit for Carl Schenk at.
Based on the findings of fact.
Yeah, based on findings and fact, on the first request.
This will be the 308th street permit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Divisional question.
Divisional question. Both 308.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll do a roll call vote on this, Patty?
Don?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Gary?
I want to abstain, I have a conflict of interest.
Deb?
Yes.
Ray? And Todd?
Yes. Motion carries. Time now is 6:50. Before we enter the next conditional use permit, I'd just say we take about a five-minute bathroom break. I need it, I don't want anybody else. So we'll reconvene here at 6:55. We need a motion for recess.
We better have a motion.
Ray? We have a motion for recess, is there a second? Time now is 6:55. Can I get a motion to go back into session?
Second.
Is Mr. Squisher Swenson out in the hall?
I bet you don't.
It appeared that he was in the last room.
He's gone. He took his cane, he took his coat.
Rob, did he say he was?
He was right there.
Oh, here he comes. Here he comes. Sorry, Gary, we don't want to start without you. We have a motion to go back into regular session, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, we're back in regular session. Just to be note, we're still in the Board of Adjustments. And the next conditional use permit.
And the next conditional use permit is for Mr. Schenk. This one's labeled the Gayville Conditional Use Permit, is that correct?
That is correct.
Denise?
Mm-hmm.
Same parameters apply in regards to, as we used with the previous Conditional Use Permit. Denise, the floor is yours.
Yes, the hearing, conditional, our planning commission met on February 13, 2018, and it was moved by Kretzinger and seconded by Goose Miller to recommend the conditional use permit, based on findings of facts that were dated February 13, pursuant to Article 18, Section 1805 of the Yankton County zoning ordinance, to build two 2,400-head pork finishing swine over 55 pounds, which is 960 animal units each. So there would be a total of 1,920 animal units in the two barns. This is a Class D finishing barn in an agricultural district in Yankton County, and the said property is described as southwest quarter, except the east 794.52 feet, the west 1,542.30 feet, south 615.61 feet, and except lots H3, H4, and H5. This is Section 9, Township 93 North, range 54 West, and an east 794.52 feet, west 1,542.30 feet, south 616.61 feet of the southwest quarter, Section 9, Township 93 North, range 54 West, and it's herein after referred to as, in the Gayville Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. And the E-911 address is still to be announced, South Dakota Highway 50, Gayville, South Dakota. It was viral call vote, seven members all voted yea, and the motion carried.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll allow the applicant to state their, describe their application.
Mr. Chairman, Dave Domina, again and again on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Schenk, I again use the same methodology described before, which was to compare the application and its supporting documents with the findings of fact that were made to see if I could find any deficiency. I could not. This Gayville property is located in a different spot, so I'll be brief about some of those characteristics as I describe this. The access for this property is off Highway 50. It is adequate, there's plenty of space for parking, turnaround, and all of the other activities associated with and required by the operation, including deliveries and removal of items that must be disposed of. This, of course, is another situation in which there is an application before you, before a permit. If it's approved, that will lead to a process with a DNR that will involve necessary permits approved by it, that will include management plans, nutrient plans, waste disposal plans, stormwater protection plans during construction, and each and every one of those other criteria like you saw and mentioned before. This is also an application in which there are no requested variances, there are no required adjustments or changes in any setbacks. This application meets or exceeds each and all setbacks in your ordinances. The district is an ag district, the proposed project is for a Class D facility, it will consist of two buildings like the last one did. There are some trees located on this facility that will provide some screening, there are no plans to plant additional trees at this time. The odor footprint tool is actually, produces a, about the same effect as for the last application. There, the probability was that 98% of the time, there would be no adverse impact, and this application, that fraction drops 1% to 97% of the time. Those are the essential elements of this application. In an effort to perhaps help shorten up the timeframe here, I spoke with the engineer and I spoke with the builder and asked if their answers to identical questions that you put to them in the last hearing about the last facility would apply to this facility, and they said categorically it would. So the engineering process would be the same, the construction components, processes, and elements would be the same. So with that, we respectfully ask that you adopt the findings of fact and approve the application.
Thank you. Is there any questions of Mr. Domina?
Has it, has it ever flooded in that area in the last 50 years?
Mr. Schenk nods his head in the negative, and I'm not aware of any flood, Mr. Swenson.
Never flooded in that area.
Not that we're aware of.
Okay.
Gary, that question is answered on, also one in the packet under page 26, under Stockwell Engineers. It states, this is not in, located in 100, within 100-year floodplain, is that correct, Mr. Warner? Looking at the map with the setbacks, in the right margin on the side there, it talks about, it's not within known wells, private drinking water, and is not within 100-year floodplain, is that correct?
That is our belief, yes.
Thank you.
I believe that's correct.
Any questions from the commission in regards to whether it's, any other new questions of the applicant or his team? Hearing none, we'll, we'll open up the floor for 30 minutes for anyone who wants to speak in favor of the conditional use permit for Mr. Schenk, labeled the Gayville Permit. 7:02 at this time.
I would like to respectfully renew and extend my comments from the first application, the first permit, to this one, and I'm Charlotte Romerime from El Cester, South Dakota, Union County, South Dakota.
Thank you. And I guess I'll also put this out there, if there's new testimony, we can, if you want to come forward and say your testimony from the previous permit is the same, we'll take that, and then if there's, after that, we'll take, take any new testimony in favor of this conditional use permit.
John Gunderson, I read South Dakota, ditto.
Glenn Muller, South Dakota Park Producer Council, I would ask that you resubmit the comments from the previous hearing.
Louis Johnson, 30441, Valen, South Dakota. Listening to everything that was said on the previous one, there are some questions I had, I heard about the lady with the house that the basement was cracking on, and that was a concern. Now, was there soil borers taken before they put the basement in? Was the basement engineered? Or did somebody just come in, dig it, and they built the basement like they normally do, and, without checking that? And I guess if we have to have rules for hog buildings, maybe we should apply them to everybody in, or everything in the county. The other observation I've made over the years is, everybody's concerned about water pollution. I've asked this question many times, and so far, I haven't gotten an answer. BY Water pulls their water out of the lake, which is part of the Missouri River, comes into Lewis and Clark Lake, they pull their water out by Tabor, then it comes down to Yankton, and Yankton has to dig wells to dilute the river water enough to get it to pass. Now, is there a totally different standard of water quality for Yankton? Or is there a massive amount of pollution between BY's water plant and Yankton's? Just one of those things that I thought of, that is like, and I don't believe there's any cave holes out there. There's a lot of houses built on sand with quarter acre lots and sewer systems, so is the pollution coming from there, maybe we should be addressing that instead of the hog buildings? And as far as Mr. Hebdo telling about his nitrate issues in Nebraska, he failed to mention whether that was commercial fertilizer or if it was animal nutrients. And as being a farmer, I've never had anybody tell me how much commercial fertilizer I can put on a field. If I wanted to put 1,000 pounds of nitrogen on, I could. Wouldn't raise anything, but I could do it. With a manure management plan, you have the soil tested, you have the manure tested, and then an agronomist tells you how much you can put on. And we have heavier clay soils around here for the most part, so you can hold it in the root zone longer. Best management practices? Who in their right mind is going to spend 750,000 to a million and a half to go out and do a crappy job? I think that you're going to be staying on top of it, you're going to be watching it, because if there is a bonus for doing a good job in the contracts, that would be beneficial to them. And going back to the manure for one moment, it's an excellent source of renewable food for the plants. And you have an excellent person to talk to. Mr. F here has been in the hog business for quite a while, and he can tell you the difference between plant food in manure and the same amount of plant food in petroleum-based fertilizer, that we don't have to ship some of it, the potash, and that halfway's around the world. We can grow it. And as far as, I know Carl well enough to know that is a businessman, he's not going to go out there and just, oh, put these up just to show people he can do it. He's doing it to make money. And if that makes him greedy, I guess anybody that goes to work to get ahead is greedy. And I'm going to touch on social media now for a minute, because I was referred to as a greedy bastard on social media. And I've listened to these people that, oh, God, we've lived here 10 years, and we've done this, and we've done that. I live in the house that my grandfather was born in, in the 1880s. My dad was born in that house. My great-grandfather built that, and the barn that sits out in the yard. We have our 125-year family farm signed, and we're not that far away from our 150-year family farm sign. So it's not like I just moved into the neighborhood. And I know Nancy, I know Carl, I know their kids, they're decent people, and they, the people that don't like him are the people that have never talked to him or never met him. And I think that all of you, after looking at the detail he went through to fill out his application, has anybody else put that much work in it? I went through it with him, and it's like, phew, that's more than I need to know. He's thorough. And I think this is a great opportunity for him and his family and other people in the area, because the more that you have, the more people you're going to employ. And I guess the thing about it is, at $750,000 a shed, where are you going to get that kind of economic growth where you don't have to set up a TIF district or a TID? We're going to pay taxes on it. And I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others like to speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Good evening, Lynn Peterson. I resubmit and stand by the comments made earlier. Furthermore, I did want to just touch on, you know, I know that, standing up here, it seems like you're probably the only five, six people on earth standing in front of everybody, and taking, taking heat from both sides, and I totally respect that and understand that. I guess what I wanted to add is, you're not, you're not in this issue alone. There's a lot of people that understand this issue, from county commissioners to state employees, all the way up to the governor. Just want to quickly read a quick quote. Governor Dugard said here a few months ago, "If you're a small town wanting a large employer to relocate there, if it's not ag development, it's almost certainly not coming." Furthermore, the next comment he made during the same speech, "We know, of course, that the vast majority of new jobs come from businesses that are already in your community," the governor. So I relate that back to, of course, agriculture-based jobs as well. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Once again, Jim Petrick from Gayville, and just a couple thoughts that kind of crossed my mind here, listening to some of the conversation and comment here this evening. Number one, in regards to water quality, you know, I'm all about water quality, and we can put down test wells on these sites, and we can monitor the aquifer if you want us to, as producers. The only thing I got to tell you is, we got to put these down before the buildings are built, because you might be surprised what's down there now. We have several thousand rural septic systems, many of them discharging over shallow aquifer in our county, in Clay County, as well as in Yankton County. And I, it's kind of hilarious, but from time to time, you know, you see somebody getting all bent out of shape about an E. coli situation, and more often than not, it's traced back maybe to a human-use facility versus a livestock facility. In regard to air quality, again, everybody wants to be a good neighbor, everybody wants to be a good steward of land. As I said earlier, good people are what make good operations work, and everybody wants, I just, I just think if these buildings are built and they're managed like I think these guys can run them, I just think in five years, we're going to say, what was the fuss all about? But in regard to air quality and the building designs, again, there's no silver bullet, there's no perfect answer on a power-ventilated building versus a tunnel-ventilated building versus a biofilter building. And I know some of you feel that the biofilter is kind of the gold standard as far as air quality, but I, I just have to say, you know, just my little bit of experience being around a lot of hog buildings, when you push that air through the filters, you're basically choking your airflow down through the building by about 30%. So as far as the pig's quality of life, as far as their utility consumption, they're actually quite a bit more challenging to keep running at a, you know, the filters need to be maintained, they're tremendous challenge for rodent control, because as somebody said earlier, you know, because it's a perfect place for rats, it's a warm mist, this filter is a warm, moist place. And so, you know, do they have a place, you know, probably selectively, and probably, I think maybe Ray said, it may be like in a smaller building where you don't have the higher airflow rates required, like in a nursery or something like that, but, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of, lot of questions that, a lot of issues that need to be resolved with the biofilter situation, but any kind, any of these buildings, if properly managed, we can treat the pits, we can use the power washers to control dust, and when we're washing the alleys and stuff, that tends to kind of prevent crusting from building up in the pits and such, and, and that will really help be good neighbors too. So there's many small management practices that can be utilized to be good neighbors, and, and I think these guys are good neighbors, and I gotta say, I just think in five years, we're going to wonder what the fuss was all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in support of this conditional use permit?
Hi, my name is Riley Ellwanger, I'm from Gregory, South Dakota. I live on, I used to live on a hog farm.
Will you spell your last name for us, please?
E-L-L-W-A-N-G-E-R.
Thank you.
I live south of Gregory, about 10 miles, we have around, I don't know, 7,500 head of hogs down there. I guess I grew up with them, and I never had a problem with health or anything else. I mean, I'm, I go to college at Mitchell Tech as, for agronomy. For job support, this would help a lot, I had nine classmates in my class that were... For job support, this would help a lot. I had nine classmates in my class that worked, and neighboring grandkids of my neighbors and their kids worked on our farm also, and it helped them out a lot, summer jobs and stuff like that. I guess we've never had a problem with the biofilter. We have a, what do you want to call it? A farrowing barn is what we call it with the biofilters. And then we also have a weaning, we have three different buildings, I guess you could say, for our hogs. And I myself own 300 head, and my grandpa has part of it, and it's been in our generation or in our family for about six generations now. So I guess I don't see a problem with, I'm sorry, I don't talk in front of people, so.
That's fine.
I don't see a problem with this at all. And I, I'm in support of this, because in my community, it's helped my community out enough, and it's helped kids in my class and kids that are younger than me work there now, too. So, health-wise, that, that's not a problem, I don't think, because our house is only 50 yards away from our barns. So, we never had any seepage. We built these, we built our newest barn about five or six years ago, and the other ones were about 10 years ago. But I guess with water seepage or cracks like that, we had a construction guy or whatever. We had a guy come out there and do all that boring. I talked to my father about this already a couple of weeks ago, because I came to this, another county commission's meeting about two or three weeks ago, or whenever it was. But I just, I think that it's not a problem at all, and I think you guys should support it as well.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Are you at Mitchell Tech right now?
I'm in my first year, but I was in the Army for about a year and a half, and I got discharged for medical reasons.
So about '20, '21?
I will be '21.
Okay, thank you.
Question. You said you have a farrowing barn that has biofilters in it?
Yes, that does, because it's kind of required by law to have that, or our county requires that anyway. But.
Do all your barns?
No, not all my barns, just my farrowing barn. The other ones are those tarp ones that they're making.
Correct.
Yep. And, yeah, even with those, we haven't had a smell problem with our neighbors or anything like that either. And we do also cut into the soil and fertilize that way, too. And I'm an applicator also, so I know how that's all goes.
Thank you. Thank you. It's about 7:20. We still have about 10 to 12 minutes yet. Anyone else that could speak in support of this conditional use permit?
Robert Pring, 448-77305th Street. I'm kind of an old guy, and it's kind of nice to listen to somebody young and enthusiastic and looking to the future. And there is our future, not with us old guys. And it's up to you guys, because we fought, we complained and fought about all these rules and regulations for 30 years when this first started. And we finally settled, so we got good laws and everything. And it's very simple for you folks anymore. There's laws and things to go by. You follow them, and it will work very nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in support?
Dan Bamer with Ethan Lumber. We've been in business since 1907. We make a policy of using the best quality materials that we can possibly use. We've worked on these buildings. I think the first ones of this type went up in about 1990. They're still in operation. The materials that we use, like I say, is the best that we can possibly get. We're using above normal, like the green treated lumber that goes on the sidewalls. We want these buildings to last for a long, long time. Our steel, as was mentioned earlier, was a G. 90 rather than something that's out there that may be a G. 60 or G. 40, so we're looking at 50% more galvanizing. So we want these buildings to last for a long, long time. We want these to be as good for everyone as the people investing the money. I mean, they're sticking $3.25 million in this, so we want it to last as well as they do. Reference to the water quality, I live on a farm myself. We raised hogs for a long time when I was young and up until when I started working at the lumberyard. I just got done drilling a well that's about 100 feet from a confinement that we had for 20 years. It went 152 feet deep. We sent the water into the state to get checked, and it is perfect drinking water. So, and that had raised pigs for a long time, 100 feet away from that well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How many canals have you built yourself?
I would say probably several hundred that we've been involved with. I've built hog buildings for probably, I constructed them when I first started there. I've been at the lumberyard for 39 years. We built farrowing and nursery barns at the beginning, and in about 1988 or '90, we started building these confinement with a deep pit. There were years when they were really good, when we may have built 20 or 25. And then when there was a cycle where it dropped to probably six or eight of them. And this year, there could be somewhere around 30 to 40.
So you've built 200, 300 of them?
Probably, yes, at least. Yep.
Thank you. Any other public comments in support of this conditional use permit? We have about nine minutes.
Unless there's somebody else at one point.
South Dakota, John Gunderson, Irene, South Dakota. In the late 1970s, South Dakota rewrote their water law. And as part of that effort, one of the things that this state did, and it was a leader in the country, was put in a system of monitoring wells from corner to corner, starting down at Dakota Dunes and ending up in Buffalo County. And the, both the quantity and the quality of the water in the state is monitored on a monthly basis in the summertime when they're checking irrigation wells. And many of you have seen these little plastic pipes sticking up in road ditches around here. Those are those monitoring wells. And so if there is a question of what the water quality is, both deep water quality and quantity, those records are at DNR in Pierre, and they're accessible on the DNR website. So if we do have a problem, and we have had problems in the state with especially commercial fertilizer in certain areas in some of the shallow or locked aquifers, they have been able to be addressed. That is one advantage of manure management plans, is that you're monitoring what you're using and what you're putting on, so you do not have an excess, and so it does not run into the waterways. Thank you.
Any other comments in support of this permit? We have a few minutes left. Seeing none. One last opportunity. All right, we'll close that part of the comments in support of the conditional use permit. 7:25. We'll now open up the comments in opposition of the permit. And I will also, if you want to restate your comments from the previous permit and reenter them in here, we will take that comment as well, and also new comments at this point in time. So I'll open up the podium at 7:25 here in regards to opposition of the conditional use permit. And again, if you want to restate your previous comments, just tap to the mic and say.
Dan Dolish, Mission Hill. Just reinstate my comments I made earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Phil Tow, Gayville, two miles south of proposed site. My wife and I live down there by the Missouri River. Couple of questions or comments. Mr. Ellwanger, you sat down, you said, "I screwed this up?" No, you didn't. You spoke well. The Army misses you, I'm sure. So you did a fine job. We need more young men like you in our state as well. Questions I have about this particular site on Highway 50 and 448, is that right, Carl?
That's correct.
Have you got any consideration to entering from 448 is one question. Are we, you going to have a turn lane off of Highway 50 for trucks slowing down and all that traffic? And there's not a lot of traffic, but some that may not be used to turn off on there. I understand you're going to keep the trees on the north, on the north side of that property you're building. You're building to the north of that tree line. Are you going to get rid of that homestead that's there, tearing it down? I just haven't heard on that, which is, which is fine. Just wonder what's going to happen at that site between the Highway 50 and that, that tree line on the north of that property that's there, and are those buildings coming down and the barns put on the north side of that property? And if you can have a discussion about the entrance from 448 versus Highway 50, pros or cons on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opposition in regards to this permit? We have time at this. And again, if you want to restate your previous comments, please come to the podium.
My name is Kathy Weiss. I live on 291st Street on the far north end of the county. And I just wanted to say that I'm not in favor of these hog barns. And that's it.
Other comments in opposition of the permit? Any other comments in opposition of the permit?
Hi, I'm Kristy Schultz. I live at 44121, 304th Street. I have a question related to something that was just brought out by Phil Tow. There's a homestead on this property where he's going to put the hog barns. How far away is the homestead from where the barns are going to be located? Because if this is an abandoned homestead, it almost certainly had a well. And we want it to be absolutely certain that it is a safe distance from any of the hog barns or the waste containment facilities. There are some other concerns. We already know the soil borries aren't done yet. I was wondering if it is above a shallow aquifer? And how many employees will be working at the facility? And would you consider designing biofilters into the site plan and having a closed-sided barn? How do you propose to deal with the road limits? Are you willing to work cooperatively, both physically and financially, to maintain the public roads and bridges that you will utilize? Where do you plan to obtain water for the facility? And how do you, have you considered how your proposed water usage will affect others in the area? And what is your onsite water supply reserve capacity? They addressed, "Will this construction of the project disturb any wetland or riparian areas? What is the depth, distance, and formation of the nearest aquifer? Have you studied the impact of drainage on neighboring and downstream lands? Do any of the fields you plan to spread the manure on, are they tiled? And if they are, how are you going to deal with that issue? Have you considered using detention ponds, grass waterways, artificial wetlands, or filter strips around the facility to manage runoff in case of a breach in the manure containment system?"
Mr. Chairman, I object to this line of questioning, because most of these will be covered in the process that will take place after the granting and then be responded to. And secondly, the vast majority of the questions are not covered.
I thought we were allowed to voice our concerns, and I believe these are legitimate concerns.
You continue.
Okay. Have you provided closure and post-closure plans for monitoring the site when operations have ceased? One of the people that spoke said that if we were going to have manure, excuse me, water test well monitoring, that that needed to be done before the buildings were built. And how many, how many animals will go through the facility in a year? And we would like to request that they have a chain-link fenced area around where any dead animals are stored until they can be picked up by a rendering truck, so that we don't have the issue of stray animals dragging carcasses around. And in closing, I would like to request that if you consider approving this permit, I would like to request that you not approve it. But should you approve it, I again would like to reiterate what I said before. I believe that Yankton should be on the cutting edge, and we should require something like a closed-sided barn with biofilters, something that is actually on the cutting edge of technology, and show the other counties that this, that we do value the environment, and we do value our neighbors, and that we do want to protect the public welfare in considering these facilities. I would also like to request a performance bond. We require that of towers, which are not a threat to the environment. We require a communications tower to have a performance bond, to decommission it. I would also like to request a catastrophic containment plan in case the manure management or the manure containment facility fails. I would like to request test well monitoring by a third party and yearly inspections by a third-party engineering firm. You are allowed to put conditions on this applicant, and this applicant can afford it. I believe that the citizens of Yankton County deserve to have their health and welfare and their water supply protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in opposition?
My name is Leanne Johnson. My family farm will be about mile and a quarter due south of this proposed site, and I just wanted on record that I am in opposition to this. This, my children and grandchildren live there, and they would be fourth and fifth generation that have lived on that farm. And I just really hate to see the air quality damaged, the water quality damaged, the quality of life that they have right now damaged. And I really would wish that you could find some other location where in a less populated area to put these hog confinements instead of a little bit more than a mile or so west of Gayville and in a community where there are so many little family farms, I think you call them acreages. And there's other places in the state of South Dakota where there's, it might be 20 miles between farms or ranchers or homesteads. And so I just really wish that you would vote no on this.
Thank you. Any other comments in opposition of the conditional use permit? Any other comments? Last opportunity. All right, we will close the public comment at this point in time in opposition of the conditional use permit for Mr. Schenk, located in the, labeled as the Gayville area. So at this time, we'll allow 10 minutes for Mr. Schenk or one of his team members to speak in a rebuttal. And I have And I have 7:36 on my iPad.
Mr. Chairman, mindful that rebuttal means to meet an argument and to try to turn it back, there really aren't any of those to address here. I'll respond to just a couple of questions that were asked. First of all, the abandoned farmstead on this property will be taken down at some point in time and isn't used, and any well that was there either has been considered and will be accommodated. Secondly, there was consideration given to the access issue. The Highway 50 access is planned, and of course, any change in the structure or construction or lanes on the highway would be up to the state of South Dakota, not the applicant. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I ask that young lady there that farms in another county, you have a CAFO and you have about 1,500 acres of land to use. How many acres of land does Mr. Schenk have to put the nutrient servitor on?
As the application indicates, they'll all be applied within five miles. They won't all necessarily have to be applied on his land, but he has about 2,800 acres.
2,800, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions by the commission in regards to the condition use permit in front of us at this time for Mr. Schenk? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion in regards to the condition use permit.
I move approval of the second request for condition use permit.
Based on... One second. Are you...
Yeah, according to, based on findings.
So there's a motion from Don on, based on the findings and facts. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Right? Open up to discussion with the commissioners.
I would just like to add that this is by far the most thorough application that I've seen that meets every requirement of a Class D facility in our current ordinance.
Other discussion?
May I, Denise? In regards to the application process, all procedures have been followed that need to be followed at this time.
That is correct. The CUP application meets and exceeds all of our zoning ordinance per the findings and facts, and this is probably the most thorough application that we've ever done any hog confinement ever out of our office. So it, to adopt the findings, the facts.
Other discussion from the commission? Do want to point out, as I look at the information laid out to us today, the site location on this will utilize what looks like no county roads, will be based off a state highway. There's access to that road that's already existing, and Mr. Dom is correct, that is an issue with the state DOT, not the Yankton County. There is a fenced-in area per the map from mortality, so Ms. Schultz's comments in that, just want to let her know that's there as well, along with many other conditions that have been put into place through the recommendations of planning and zoning board.
And I might also add, Mr. Chairman, that that area of Highway 50 is four lanes, and so turning, there's multiple turns made off of Highway 50 without a trailing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Patty, please take a roll call.
Don?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Gary?
I've got a conflict interest, so I'm going to abstain again.
Deb?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes. Motion carries. Can I motion to go out of Board of Adjustments into the Drainage Board?
So moved.
We'll set the motion. Do I need a motion to go out of Board of Adjustments?
So moved.
Don?
Second.
Ray, Gary got the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now can I get a motion to go into Drainage Board?
So moved.
Ray? Don? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in Drainage Board. We'll give the room a few minutes to clear for those who want to leave. We have a drainage permit for Mr. Kevin Hunoff.
Yes, Kevin Hunoff is also present.
Denise, will you pull the mic down?
The Drainage Board met on February 27th, discussed with Kevin Hunoff regarding his drainage tiling permit. It was moved by Kralczyk and seconded by Catalic to recommend approval for the drainage permit based on findings of fact dated February 27th. Said property is legally described as West Half Northwest Quarter, except Lot S2 and except Lot 1, Hunoff Sedition, and the North Half Southwest Quarter, Section 24 Township 95 North and Range 56 West, herein referred to as in central township of the county of Yankton, state of South Dakota. And a roll call vote, all members present voted yes.
Any questions for Denise in regards to this drainage permit? If there are none from the commission, anyone like to speak in regards to this in favor of the drainage permit? Would you like to speak at all, Kevin? Since you've waited so patiently.
Yeah, you did.
I appreciate it. I think, just like Denise said, I think when I went through the Drainage Commission, it satisfied all the requirements for the permit. I'm not exactly sure what you guys have in front of you for a packet, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any comments from the neighbors at all on this process?
Not a bit. No, I've spoken with several of them through sporting events or whatever.
How many acres are you draining? And you're tying into a blue line?
What's that?
Tying into a blue line?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions for Kevin? Hey, Kevin? Any, I guess there are any public statements you want to make at all?
No, I'm good. No.
Is there any public comment in opposition to the drainage permit for Mr. Hunoff? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Kevin Hunoff drainage permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the West City Limits Road payment, and this is in regards to the agreement we have made with the city of Yankton. Patty, do we need to make a special motion on this? It's been approved in the budget.
In the claim, while you approved in the claims, I just need a motion to move the money from designated to undesignated into the highway budget.
So you need a motion to move from designated...
To undesignated.
To, and then into the...
Into the highway budget.
Is that one motion?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we move $1 million from designated to undesignated and then to the Highway Department in payment of the Yankton County's portion of the West City Limit Road project.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, was that money taken from the fund to replace the fleet bridge? Is that where that came from?
We haven't made any movement on that money yet, but that's the intent.
Okay.
But that's not this motion, though.
That's from the designated...
So this is it? Thanks for the question, Gary. So yes, it is. It'll come from the fleets, 1.1 million then.
Is that totally empty then, after that?
Yeah, about 100,000 left in that fund.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
So, thank you for the question, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions in that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Patty, Good Friday.
I'm just requesting for the county employees to have Good Friday off. You did give the whole day last year, and I'd just like to comment too that Governor Hugard gave the state employees Friday and Monday, but you did give us Friday last year.
Any comment by the commission?
I can support the Good Friday off.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this, Patty?
I would have liked to seen it last meeting so we could have it posted for the public a little more than 48 hours ahead.
That's a week.
It's not this weekend.
We got another 10 days.
Any motion?
You're right. Sorry.
Don, do you want to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Final item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Workshop that myself, Commissioner Katerin, attended here last week in Pier. As always, for me, it's always good to take away some good information from there. It's always been beneficial. I guess, of course, roads has always been a major topic, and I guess just want to touch on a few, there's some grants out there that I think some of the smaller communities should really focus on with the DOT. It's a community access grant. The state has about $2.5 million for small communities. It's a 60%, 40% split, where the state would pay 60, and the entity that would win the grant would be paid 40%. They don't get a lot of applications for that, so it's something I think we need to make aware of, so.
And what does that cover? Is it roads?
It's a road, it's part of the DOT. It's essentially for roads in smaller communities that don't have a big enough budget to handle that. If there's a county road that goes through there, we could be eligible for it as well, but it's something good to pursue and make sure it's out there.
And you said it was 60/40?
There was many other information, but I think maybe if you want, anybody else want to touch on anything from the meeting? I think we've had a long day already.
I think it's very worthwhile to go and attend. You get a lot of interaction with other counties, a good chance to talk with Clay and Union County, Lincoln County, Monmouth County, county commissioners. We all have a lot of the same issues and get some good ideas.
There's always something to be taken away from there. One of them that I really appreciated was when they were talking about the equalization, since we're moving right into that aspect, listening to discussion by other commissioners, issues they have in there in regards to equalization of taxation. There's always something good to pull away from there. And I also kind of, the scam, the lady who talked about the scams, identity theft, you know, them crooks are crooks, and that's what they're good at, and it took a lot away from there. It was a very good experience.
I'm glad you brought that identity theft up because that's something that hits counties as well as not just individuals, so they talked quite a bit at length in that, so.
It's not me. It's not me. Identity theft, I should say. Is there another eight-county meeting coming up?
Tomorrow.
And where is that?
Clay County.
In Vermillion.
Any other items for next meeting on the agenda?
Oh, boy.
Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Gary, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.